If we're leaning back, you should still be able to hear us. Now, a couple of quick announcements. As you'll find out, the agenda is not on YouTube. For some reason, it just would not come up. But if those out there that can, you can pull it up on the website and you'll be able to follow it as we go. The other thing with the sound system, if you still have trouble hearing, you can go onto Auto Fetch. Go to either Google Play or Apple Store. Download Auto Fetch Express. Open it up and you'll be able to listen to everything we're seeing, hearing, or doing on your phone. But I would ask you to make sure that you're using your earplugs. We don't want to have a lot of noise out there in the, in the hall. So, that, that is available. It's a good thing. It's just something everybody will maybe have to get used to, but I'm, but I'm hoping the sound system is such that we won't need to do that. All right. At this time, I'd ask everybody to please make sure that your phones are either off or on vibrate. Also, for those that are wearing hat gear, I'd ask you to take it off while you're in the hall. And at this time, I'm going to ask Reverend Ray Cameron from the First Presbyterian Church, if he'll come forward. It's always an honor and pleasure to have him here. And if everybody would stand, he's going to lead us in prayer and our pledge.
Very thankful to be here with you with lights on and air conditioning. We've been spared and blessed and we are thankful. Let's go to the Lord. Father in heaven, it is with Thanksgiving in our hearts that we gather tonight for the, the meeting of the Town of Lake Placid. We do pray for those who are still struggling without power, without water, and with many difficulties. And we pray your help, we pray your protection on those that are in the midst of this, helping in so many ways. Lord, for the work of the council, we thank you that your word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. And that if we will use it, that it guides us in all manners of life and every decision we have before us. And so I pray your wisdom, your grace, and your blessing on the work that they do tonight and upon this, our town, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Also, before we get started, I want to give a big special thanks to our town staff and our police department for the way they conducted themselves and handled this through the hurricane. I'm glad to see everybody came through it okay. There was some tree damage, some power. Let's say our prayers for the, the mobile home park that got hit by the tornado. Luckily, that we had no deaths. So, Lake Placid, I believe, was, was spared. Prayers, I think, did a lot for that. And I'm just glad everybody's safe and, and we're back to some sort of enormity. And I want to put a big special thanks out to Duke Energy. I think they went out way above and beyond to get power back as quick as they could because there's still people out there that don't have power. So, let's, uh, let's pray for them too. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Here.
All right. Consent Agenda One, A through E.
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda One.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Are there any comments from the podium?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I would like to make a comment that wasn't captured in the minutes, and I'm glad it's not, but at the last meeting when Carolyn Morrison had applied for to be the ARPAQ position, and Carolyn is a veteran. She's a West Point grad, a lieutenant colonel retiree, and some comments were made that I don't share and I, and that basically she lives in Lake June Point and she makes six to seven figures. And I was really embarrassed by those comments that were made. I live in Lake June Point and I respect anybody that wants to volunteer and to contribute, contribute their time. So, I just wanted to go on record that I don't share that view. I don't think the majority of the council does and that we really encourage and we want diversity in people, no matter where you live or what income level you are, to volunteer within the Town of Lake Placid.
I'd just like to go on record that I think you're probably talking about the comment that I made. And I have certainly the most utmost respect for Ms. Morrison. My husband was a veteran as well, and I think what she's done and her military background is wonderful and, and to be respected. We are looking for diversity and we have not quite reached that diversity yet with the amount of representation we have from Lake June Point. However, they are very interested in what's going on with the town and, you know, who's to say that there is anything wrong with that?
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, poll the council.
I'm sorry, I missed the first and second for some reason.
The first was Worley, second was me.
Okay. And now, right?
Yes.
Ms. Worley. Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, presentations and requests to speak. First is Hurricane Milton Town Update. Have a resolution, I'm going to read, Resolution 2024-30. A resolution of the Lake Placid Town Council proclaiming a local state of emergency and authorizing the town police chief to establish, modify, enforce, and terminate curfew in the Town of Lake Placid, consistent with any curfew established by the Highlands County Sheriff if necessary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm your new town administrator, Charlotte Rodriguez, and I want to echo what the mayor said and take a moment to acknowledge the incredible teamwork and camaraderie that was displayed by our staff before and after the storm. A huge thank you to everyone that was involved in ensuring that meals were cooked and ready for all of the staff that were actively working to get our town back up and running. It was very humbling to witness the way that everyone pulled together to meet the internal and the external needs of our community. Being that I was just two weeks on the job, it was absolutely humbling to be able to watch a staff work so tirelessly together. A special recognition to Smoke and Grow's Barbecue for generously feeding our town staff on Saturday. We also extend our gratitude to the police department for their unwavering support during this time, as well as to the Highlands County Administrator, Ms. Lori Herner, the Emergency Management Manager, Corey Amston, and the Sheriff's Department and all of their teams for the swift action to take care of our town. We couldn't have done it without the National Guard, Unit Charlie Two One Sixteen, the field artillery, and Do It Best Hardware, who provided essential equipment for our point of distribution. Our town staff did a fantastic job operating the Skidster and ensuring that everything ran smoothly, so a huge kudos to the team. On Friday and Saturday, our police department assisted at the points of distribution with five officers from our department and three from the sheriff's department. That was on Friday. And four from our department on Saturday. Together, we served approximately 1,000 residents. Officers have returned to their normal shifts and with one detail remaining for the Duke Solar Farm that is currently waiting until the fence has been repaired. I'm pleased to report that we didn't encounter any heavy areas of destruction within our town limits. We do still have considerable amount of debris in Divine Park and along the right-of-bays on Highway Twenty Seven, which are currently being addressed. The Department of Transportation is handling the major roads. We have identified a damaged lighting pole at Lake June Park that needs replacement, and the park will be closed until further notice due to downed power lines and other debris, debris that requires cleanup. Our town team has already collected eight truckloads of debris throughout the area. In a debriefing call today with the county, it was emphasized that all debris must be placed by the roadside by Sunday, October 20th, with pickups beginning on Monday, October 21st. Please remember to separate the piles as usual and to place them at least 10 feet away from any utilities or obstructions such as fire hydrants, backflow preventers, power poles, cable boxes, mailboxes, and vehicles. Updates will be on the county Facebook page and Instagram, and we will also update on our town website and the Nextdoor app. I would just like to say that as we reflect on this challenging time, that again, we want to highlight the amazing unity that's been shown throughout the whole community. It fills me with pride to call the Town of Lake Placid my family. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Should wood and shingles be kept separate from landscape debris? Or what tips do you want to give the public to make sure that we keep the things separate?
Yes, separate. Looking to the...
Try to keep all the tree debris and all that stuff separated from the general trash.
And then maybe we could, those dates are important, and I appreciate that, so maybe we can put on Nextdoor to alert the public and especially keep things separate because I know at times you go by and people keep, yeah, they, well, they think the shingles, I'm just going to toss it on a pile that's there. Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Motion of second. Did you get a motion of second?
I'll make a motion. We accept the resolution.
I'll second it.
Next, I'll ask the, uh...
Mayor, do you roll call?
Oh, roll call? I didn't do that? You, you know we're here. Go ahead and call or roll.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, I guess, Police Chief?
He's over here.
Oh, he was over here. That's right.
Officer Becerra, if you would, please present yourself before council. Today, we gather to celebrate not just the promotion, but the embodiment of dedication, bravery, and leadership in our ranks. It is with great pride and admiration that I stand before you to promote Master Officer Becerra to the rank of corporal. Throughout his career, Officer Becerra has displayed unwavering commitment and unparalleled courage, rising to the occasion when lives hang in the balance. In a moment that profoundly impacted a family in our community, he heroically saved the life of an infant. This act of selflessness not only showcased his extraordinary skill, but also his deep sense of duty and compassion. Officer Becerra's actions are a shining testament to what it means to be a member of the Lake Placid Police Department. Beyond this remarkable incident, Jose consistently leads our department in activity, demonstrating not just a commitment to his own duties, but inspiring those around him to strive for excellence as well. He is not just a colleague, he is a mentor and a guide, always willing to lend his expertise and support to others. His motivation is contagious, fostering a spirit of collaboration and camaraderie within our team. Promotion to corporal is not merely a title. It is a recognition of Jose's dedication, leadership, and the significant impact he has on our department and the community. His ability to lead by example ensures that we continue to uphold the highest standards of service and integrity. As we take this moment to recognize Officer Becerra's achievements, let us also look forward. I am confident that in his new role as corporal, he will continue to inspire greatness and lead us into the future where we remain unwavering in our mission to serve. Congratulations, Corporal Becerra. We are proud of you, and we are excited to see how you will continue to lead and make a difference in the lives of those around you.
If we could have the council members come down and get a picture with him. Next, we have Sandra Bass from the Miracle League, who is here.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Bass, and I'm the president, director of the Miracle League. I have these for information on Miracle League to give to you. Is that appropriate?
Sandra, do you mind if we pull your microphone down a little?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes. I know there's a lot of new councilmen and women on the board since I've been here in the past. I've been before town council many times about Miracle League and restrooms, and thank you.
Does anyone in the audience?
Miracle League started in 2007. When we started, we were part of the Town of Lake Placid. It was the Miracle League of Lake Placid. So, Lake Placid was instrumental in the Miracle League in the very beginning. In 2011, we discovered that we could not get funding from other sources because we were part of a governmental institution. So, we became a 501(c)(3), and that's where we adopted the Miracle League for Highlands County. Just so everyone knows, without the Town of Lake Placid, without the Board of County Commissioners, Glades Electric members, and many other sponsors, Miracle League would not exist. And the generosity of all the townspeople. Miracle League provides everything to athletes at no cost. They get pictures, they get trophies. We have an end-of-the-year party, we have a Christmas party, which we have the last few years, we've had it here at the Government Center. So, we're very appreciative of the town. And I know there's a lot of talk about the pickleball courts, and I'm all for doing things for everyone in Lake Placid. That includes our individuals with disabilities, which I think the individuals with disabilities all too often get left out of the picture. If you go back and you look through your records, I have been coming to the town council trying to get restrooms and a place to store our equipment. We don't have much, and, um, for many years. So, I'm going to go over a little bit of that and why we want it. The amount of times I've been here, I've talked with who was the town administrator at the time, Phil Williams, had many meetings with him. We were, every time I went before and talked to Mr. Williams, he would say that they were already in the middle of a grant, we needed to be next on the agenda, next on the agenda. So, they done a, a plan in which we were supposed to be in that three-year plan and to ARPAQ. We were the third on the list. I believe that was 2017, 18, somewhere around in there, and we're now at 2024. We need restrooms. Our individuals, some are in wheelchairs. If you go to any of the restrooms at any town facility, I could not take my son Danny. Now, a lot of individuals with disabilities can do that. My son Danny could not access any town restaurants. And there's many more like Danny. But, sorry, Dan, I'm just using you for an example. So, I went in my conversations with the town administrator. He done a request to Polston, I don't know the name, Polston something or other, request for a design and a price, which I think was $195,000 at the time. There was some things on there that included a whole lot of pavement that Miracle League did not need. Miracle League was willing to help be a part of the solution, help be a part of raising the money. When I say Miracle League, it is Miracle League for Highlands County. I just shortened that name and call it Miracle League. So, I had talked to a lot of businessmen and women around the county. I had talked to members of ARPAQ. I had talked to some of the county administrators. I believe I was directed to try to talk to the council of Sebring and Avon Park to see if they would put money in since we have athletes from those towns as well. And I thought about that, and in talking with some of the people from the other towns, people from Lake Placid go participate in Sebring facilities and Avon Park facilities. And to my knowledge, Lake Placid Town Council doesn't pay Avon Park for that. Miracle League is for, and we've had individuals from Okeechobee, we've had individuals from LaBelle, we've had individuals from Arcadia. I'm not going to tell an individual who wants to come and play baseball that, no, you live in a different town, you're not allowed to. We are the only one within a two, two-and-a-half hour radius to do this. We, ages three through adults, we have individuals in their 60s who love to play baseball. And so, we provide that opportunity. When I met with the town administrator at the time, my questions were simple. Can Miracle League make, raise money to help pay for the restrooms? Would that money need to go to a town account or Miracle League to hold it until we got ready to do that? What is the procedure? If Miracle League pays for the cost, if we was to be able to raise enough money to pay for the whole thing, would we have to have three bids? Because I know that's required by town projects. Now, none of us are construction people. You put me in construction and I'm totally lost. So, could it be done in phases? Because there was a lot of paving. Could we do the restrooms? Could we divide it up? Those were my questions. So, he said he did not know that I would have to make an appointment with the town attorney, Burt Harris at the time, and ask him. And I had some questions about what Polston had put on, um, the $195,000 because some of it I knew didn't apply to us. And he said I could go to Polston and have them redo it. Again, I'm totally out of my, my element. I don't think an attorney that represents the Town of Lake Placid, I don't think I as a citizen should be, have to go talk, make an appointment and talk to him because, I mean, he advises you guys, to my knowledge, but you all make the decisions. So, I feel like as a citizen, I should be able to come to you as a council or the town administrator and say, these are my questions, can you find, help me find answers so we can get a solution? Okay. With that said, finally, after a lot of emails back and forth and different things and not getting my questions answered, the town administrator finally sent an email. He was done with considering the restrooms for Miracle League, that if we wanted to pursue it, we were on our own. How do I raise money for something that is town property without including the town council? I mean, I just, I don't know how to do that. So, it kind of ended there. He didn't want to discuss it anymore. And he also, in one of my conversations, you know, he let me know that he was done with it and that many people with a disability in one place just made him cringe because of lawsuits. And he discussed a lawsuit with a lady that fell over a sprinkler or something, and we spent 30 minutes on that, which I wasn't interested in, but he was. But with all that said, the, the courts that are going by Miracle League, you know, we've been a part of the town since 2007, and I really think Miracle League needs to take priority. You're talking about the noise level with the pickleballs, the, the batting back and forth. We have a lot of individuals with autism, and it doesn't take much sometimes to really set them off and get them going. And even having the crowd in the stands sometimes. Some of our three-to-six, seven, eight-year-olds, our goal is just to get them out there on the baseball field, you know, because they see everything and it's overwhelming for them, so the stimulation, they can't handle. And I just feel like we've chose a time, for the most part, that is in the cool season. It doesn't interfere with, we don't compete with Little League because that's an animal all its own. And we don't compete for parking, we don't compete for anything. We, we try. We've not asked for any special exemptions. I've had a lot of citizens of the Town of Lake Placid say, oh, wow, why didn't you ask for an exemption from user fees? We pay our user fees because we want to be a respected organization. We are respected. And if everybody else is expected to pay it, we pay it. I don't want somebody to say, oh, well, poor, poor little guy, you know, I feel sorry for, no, I don't want that. We want to be respected just like Little League, football, basketball, whatever. And so, the increased traffic and the people at that field at that time would really interfere because we play Saturday mornings. We play from, our athletes start getting there at eight o'clock, and we play until about 11, 11:30. And having the increased traffic and the increased people would be a distraction for our athletes. And they, trying to get to the restrooms, they get so excited about playing ball. And to walk all the way over to the restrooms now, a lot of times, they just can't, they can't do it. And if they do during the game, then they've lost their time because their games are 45 minutes. Everybody bats twice, everybody, everybody scores, game's in a tie. It's a non-competitive game. So, we've parked over the grass since 2007. We have wheelchairs, we push over the grass. We have people in walkers, we push over the grass. We, we help them. Just the area, the concrete area around the baseball field is, is concrete. And we've not complained. And we're going to have to replace the field, which I have an estimate of $197,000 to replace the field. It'll probably last about two more years. I've already been working with other people to help fundraise because I'm not going to come to the Town of Lake Placid. Because I'm not going to come to the town of Lake Placid Town Council and ask you to do it without helping find a solution and being a part of that fundraising. Now, I may come to you and ask you for some money, but I'm not going to ask you to pay $197,000. Just like I've not asked you, come to you and ask you to totally pay for the restrooms. Miracle League has been fortunate and we have some money. We went to the rec board, I've talked to different members, it's been a while. And they were willing to put Miracle League on something separate besides the Lake Placid town agenda so that it didn't interfere with your other projects you have going on. What I'm here to ask you tonight is when you're considering facilities, parks, places to go, you need to include our individuals with disabilities. And we've talked about an ADA compliant playground. Most ADA compliant playgrounds is, has concrete around the outside and then on the inside where the swing sets and the slides and all of that is, is mulch. I can't push Danny through that mulch. He can't get to the swings. He can't get to any parks. So he sat outside this circle while my granddaughters go and play on the swings. Now, how inclusive is that? I mean, this is 2024. When we build things, even with three steps, we need to look at ramps. We need to look at, how are, is everybody going to be included? People that, parents that go to the football games, the basketball games, how are we including them when they have a child with autism who has a lot of sensory issues and some individuals with Down Syndrome? There's a lot of different disabilities. Wheelchairs, how are we including them so that the parents can enjoy watching their child play without having a meltdown and watching all the looks from the people in the audience? Doesn't she know how to control her child? No, not a child with autism. It's not that they're not under control. A lot of times, it's just a meltdown. And there's a big difference. And parents are expected to explain that all the time. And we get tired of explaining it. We get tired of the looks. So what's happening a lot of times is dad goes to the ballgames with the kids. Mom stays home with the child with a disability. Or mom goes to the ballgames, it's her turn, and we leave the child with a disability with dad. This is supposed to be a family event. And I would love to see Lake Placid be the first to have an interactive playground. One that the entire family can get out there together. Not me watch from way over here and watch my little brother play. And it's the same at the Miracle League. I would love to have an interactive playground. Because a lot of times, we have parents that bring their child with a disability, but they have other siblings who get bored. They don't want to watch that game. They need a playground to play on while their, their brother or sister is playing baseball. And the individuals who are waiting to play, they need a playground. Something that they can actually get to and be a part of. And we need restrooms. Now, I was able to, be able to buy a shed and put out at the Miracle League. We bought that shed for $2,800. And I was told by the town administrator, once I put that out there, if Miracle League's went away, whatever, it became town property. It was no longer Miracle League's property. Which was fine, because that's all we needed it for. Is because most of our board members are getting older and it's hard to take that equipment very far. The baseball was nice enough to let us use their concession stand. We got eyes, we could store stuff there through the season. But that's a long walk for us to carry all of that equipment back and forth, the portable tables, everything. So, I, I really want to stress, when planning things, let's include our individuals with disabilities. Let's include the entire family. Lake Placid has been a great town to raise children in. Danny went to Lake Placid High and thanks to Dr. Melissa Son, his experience at Lake Placid High was awesome. She included him in everything. I have to tell a funny story though, because it does fit in with this. He was going to her class, regular ed class. He was the only one in the wheelchair. He had a power wheelchair at the time, which probably weighed about 300, 400 pounds. And then you have Danny and all the stuff on the chair. They had a fire drill. She hadn't planned on that. The exit was steps. So she got her students and they all lifted Danny and got him out. It was just something that, we thought we had planned for everything, but we forgot about the fire drill. So, we need to take into consideration those little things and include everybody. And I do want to thank the town of Lake Placid, the people of Lake Placid, for accepting Miracle League into their town. I was asked many times why we didn't go to Sebring. Sebring was central, why didn't we put it in Sebring? Sebring didn't offer it to us. The town of Lake Placid did. The town council, the people of Lake Placid. So please don't forget us. And I, I think that's everything I wanted to cover. Do you guys have any questions of me?
I'm so glad you came. It's a lot of things that I wasn't aware of as far as like the autism and the noise and the traffic. And that dilemma with having, you're 501(c)(3) on town property, that dilemma. And in all the past history, and I, I hope we can work something out.
I hope you can too, because we've been there for a very long time. I advocate strongly to have things for everyone to do. Whether you're three, whether you're 65, whether you have a disability or not. We need more things for people to do, but please plan accordingly.
I, I just would like to thank you also for coming and educating us. I actually volunteered this last Saturday. And it was probably just one of the most rewarding experiences, because our Miracle League allows adults. A lot of them don't allow adults. And to see the smiles on everybody faces, faces for that activity. And, you know, I talked to Sandra because, you know, you've heard us say that the pavement over there, it's not like there's potholes, it's actually sinkholes and dips and things like that. And so I went back and did some research. And we talked about the restroom, we talked about interactive playground. Interesting to know, nowhere in Highlands County is there an interactive playground. That could be a niche for us to attract people to come in if we do it right and to, you know, visit our restaurants and that. But, so I did go back and do some research. In 2019, there was three projects, you know, and Miracle League was the third of the three. One was to do pavement on the boat beach side. The other was pavement over on the ballfield side. And the third was restrooms and pavement for the Miracle League. Somehow, all three of those just, and they were submitted to Highlands County too. Because Highlands County asked for a five, 10-year plan of what are the different capital improvements we want. So, I was surprised to see that fall off. And we had a good discussion about, you know, what her needs are. And it's unfortunate, we just finished the budget, but yet we've got RPAC and some other things. And I think it would be of great interest for you to meet up with Carolyn Morrison, who also has a special needs son. And then, you know, Charlotte's also on RPAC, because I think that we can team together to go to the county and probably other grants for, to meet a lot of the needs that you guys deserve.
Well, I'm always open. You know how to get in touch with me. I'm, like I say, I want to be a part of the solution. I'm not coming to you just say and asking for money. There's a lot of avenues that we have that we can raise money, but I've got to first, number one, know that it's okay with the town that we do this on their property. Number two, do we have to have three bids? I'm not a contractor, I'm not willing to subcontract it. You, you wouldn't want me to. So, working together. But I can help advocate and raise money for the projects that we want to do.
Ms. Bass, if you'll come by or call the office, we can set up a meeting and I, we can get your questions answered and we can work together on a plan.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Yes ma'am.
In my packet, I did include the schedule, which has been altered a little bit because of hurricane, the hurricanes. But I encourage you to come out, watch a ballgame, talk to our individuals that are out there. See the smiles, the excitement, especially on trophy day. We provide hot dogs for them. We, everything we provide is at no cost to the parents, other than gas to get them there. Because everything is so expensive. Danny's wheelchair, for instance, it's a manual wheelchair. If I had to purchase it, it would cost me right at $20,000. That's a lot of money. And it doesn't even have air conditioning, doesn't have a radio. Just, no, I know, right Danny? I've been telling the vendors, they needed to put a radio on it and air conditioning. Thank you for your time. If you have any other questions, I would love to be a part of how we plan for the future with individuals with disabilities, wheelchairs. Sometimes a regular wheelchair is easier to navigate than like Danny's wheelchair, which is specialized. And we have a lot of individuals in our town and in our county that has these specialized wheelchairs.
May I add one thing too? Okay, I was at the meeting at the county commission when they approved Miracle League originally. And what I was amazed at and actually broken tears is, I thought it was for the disadvantaged people, but it's not just that. It's the families, it's the neighbors, it's everybody in their life that gets pleasure from this. Because the, the individuals that participate aren't allowed to have family members help them. They get to sit in the stands and they get to see their family members and their loved ones or... It's just amazing how many more people it affects. You think you're doing it just for them, but you're not. You're doing it for their community, their loved ones, their family, their, their neighbors. It's just, it amazed me, because I was just thinking, we're going to do it for these people. Oh no, we're not doing for the challenged people. We're doing it for a huge group of people. Now, the JCs in the town did get together and we did an ADA. And I, Harry's educating me on this and I'm still not totally educated on the type of bathrooms you need. But we do, we do have an ADA bathroom that we built over by the elementary school that we should be sharing and we need to work on that, okay? Because I'm not sure it's being shared. But you, it's supposed to be open when the school's not in. It's supposed to be open for people in wheelchairs and that. And nobody knows it exists. And then our past town administrator said when we redo our playground, that we should do an ADA. But I think we need to work with Harry and with you to make sure it can accommodate maybe a little bit more. Because I understand the bathrooms need to be a little bit more. But I am telling you that it is amazing how many people the Miracle League actually affects. You think it's just the people participating, but it isn't. It's the community. It's huge, it's huge.
It is. Melissa Son, Dr. Son from Lake Placid High, she has a day every season and she brings her SGA students out. And it's a mandatory day that they come out and they volunteer. And so, it's to educate them about people with disabilities. What to say, what not to say. And one thing I will tell you, sometimes you don't know what to say. And that's okay, because if you say the wrong thing, they'll probably laugh or tell you, just like anybody else would. Why'd you say that? That's stupid. You know? They just want to be treated like people. They have a heart, they want to go... She done a prom for our individuals one year. Oh my gosh, that was awesome. So, they, they just want friends. Sometimes it takes them longer to say hello or, or acknowledge you when you say hey. Like, for instance, my son Danny, he looks to the left all the time. If you come up to him on his right side, he can't turn his head to look at you on the right side. So, it's not that he's ignoring you, it's just that he can't turn his head to the right.
Well, Ms. Bass, what I'm going to do at the end of this meeting, and it's not on the agenda, which I kind of wanted it to be, I'm going to ask for a workshop for our whole Lake June Park. To be maybe held on a Saturday, I hope. I hope the council will agree with me to go ahead and give our town administrator and our lead person, Mr. Harry over here, that we can have a workshop and you can come to that workshop and you can, you know, let's specialize on this. Let's roll up our sleeves and find out what we need to do at Lake June Park. Because it's not just your issue, trust me. It's a lot of different issues. And I would hope we could, you know, hope you can come and you can bring your ideas and write them down. Let's be specific. Don't bring any preconceived ideas. At the end of this meeting, I'm going to ask for that. And I hope the council will agree with that, to appoint, you know, our town administrator to work out a workshop for the, the whole park. Not just you, but everything. Where are the, you know, where are the, I, I hope we can do that at the end of the meeting, but we're not there yet. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have a, I agree with everything that everyone said. I'm sure that the Miracle League is wonderful and I would love to be able to participate. Unfortunately, I work on Saturdays, so it makes a bit of a conflict. But I'm looking at your speaker thing here, it says, parking for Miracle League, pickleball courts and plans for Miracle League. Did I understand you to say that if the pickleball courts are over on that side of the park, that the noise that that makes is going to be a problem for the autistic people in Miracle League?
Yes ma'am, it would be.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Absolutely, that constant banging and all, it would send some of them through the roof. And, and they would have meltdowns and...
Sure. Yeah, I'm familiar with, with that. Now, if the, if pickleball courts are on the other side of the park, it's not going to cause that kind of a, of a problem? Because it will be far enough away, right?
I would think so, yes.
Unless the pickleball players have been gracious enough for the six Saturdays, six Saturday mornings, to not play until after 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock.
That's an option. And the other thing I wanted to mention, one other thing, and I apologize. When you do parking, especially at the Miracle League field, I was just at Advent Health today. I took my son up there to have an x-ray. Their parking places probably isn't as wide as this podium. And trying to get Danny's van in there, let the ramp down, let the... You know, there's so many considerations. And I can't believe they made parking so tight there. I have to take two parking places. So sometimes you need, you know, extra wide parking places throughout the whole thing. Not just three or four handicap parking places. Because we probably have, I didn't count them, I was going to. My printer went out, so I couldn't print a lot of things for you guys to, to mine. And I apologize for that. But we probably have 10, 15 individuals in wheelchairs, specialized wheelchairs. And we probably have, I don't know, five or six who use walkers. And they're very wobbly.
People don't realize how much space you need to get, to access your vehicle. I understand that completely. Good suggestion.
And I will be happy and consider it an honor to be a part of the planning. And I will make sure the town administrator has my contact information to... I'm not a political person. I don't like to be involved in the political arena. I love working with the individuals with disabilities. That's my passion. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the presentation. Miracle League has been part of this town for a lot of years. And we want to stay and make sure we stay good partners with you.
Yes sir, I do too, and I thank you.
So get with, get with Charlotte and we'll see what we can do.
I'd be happy to work with you.
Also...
Please silence your phones.
At this time, I'd ask Karen Denning. She's from the Lake Placid Gardens Club, who has requested to speak.
I just want to bring to your attention that the Lake Placid Garden Club is going into their fifth year of using the community room here at the government center for our monthly meetings. And our meetings run from September to May. And we have approximately 60 to 70 members who attend each meeting. We are very appreciative that we've been able to use the community room for these, each month for these five years. each month for these five years. And being at the Government Center, we have not had a fee for the room rental, other than for the audio and video fee. And so, it's made it possible for us to award scholarships and camperships for the youth of Lake Placid. And this past year, we were able to award scholarships and camperships that totaled $10,000. And for a small club, we feel that's fairly good. Besides the scholarships and camperships, our funds also provide garden therapy at the nursing home each month, where we assist about 18 residents to make floral arrangements, which then they take back to their rooms. And we have quite a bit of fun with them. It's a highlight of their day. We also weed out for the little acorns, which is out at Roy's Ranch each month, and the seedlings, when planted out in the scrub, provide habitat for the scrub day. And then each month, we work with the youth group where we assist youth, giving them hands-on experience as far as planting flowers and vegetables, things of that sort. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, so any consideration that you can give to our group as far as the room rental, which is coming up, we would appreciate it so that we may continue with our community projects. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Mr. Fred Hartzell has requested to speak.
I was looking for the presentation on pickleball courts.
I don't know if there is one. But if you'd like to speak, you have the opportunity.
It was to my understanding...
State your name and address, please.
My name, Fred Hartzell. I live here in town since 1957, matter of fact, but anyway. I, it's been brought to my attention that they're going to or looking to build some pickleball courts. And I don't have a problem with pickleball courts, I just was led to, what I was told was that it was going to, they were going to take part of the parking area at the ball, at the boat ramp over at ball fields. And that, the, when you get a busy weekend, that parking area is cramped and I just don't feel like that'd be a good idea. Beans is, I mean, the lakes are a big draw point for the town of Lake Placid as far as their downtown community and downtown businesses and so on, so that's, I was, kind of thought that they were going to do the presentation on that this evening, so evidently I didn't read the agenda right, did I?
Thank you, sir.
Fred, if we have a workshop, come to that. We'll have to wait until the end of the meeting to find out if we're going to even have one.
I guess first on the agenda is ordinance 2024-14.
Mr. Mayor, could we...
Oh, no, that one's, I'm sorry, that one's been, that one's been removed from the agenda. We now go to 2024-11. There it is. Ordinance number 2024-11, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment by ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council, provide findings of fact, emblaming the county's North Lake Placid Comprehensive Plan Amendment, assigning mixed use as the future land use with site specification conditions, providing for an effective date.
I'm sorry, I still haven't found it. On my computer or on my paperwork? But she's got it on the overhead, she's, why didn't you tell me?
Counsel, comfortable with moving forward? Oh, there goes Eva. Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Dana Riddell. I'm the town planner for the record and it's great to be before the council tonight. Before us, our first item on this agenda as it relates to planning is hearing number LPCP 24002 SS, also ordinance number 2024-11. The property under consideration tonight is owned by Hayward H. Davis Trust and Carol A. Davis Trust. And the property is currently under contract for purchase by Ryan Companies U.S. Inc., who has been granted permission by the owners to make the application for zoning and future land use change. And the applicant, I'm sorry, the agent representing the applicants and owner tonight is Kimberly Saab. The address of the property is 1249 U.S. 27 North and it's located on the northwest intersection of U.S. Highway 27 North and St. John Street. The applicant is requesting an amendment to Town of Lake Placid Future Land Use, to the Town of Lake Placid Future Land Use map, that implements the Highlands County North Lake Placid Comprehensive Plan Amendment and assigns Highlands County Mixed Use as the future land use with site-specific conditions. The request includes text amendments that relate directly to and are adopted simultaneously with the small-scale future land use map change. So, a lot of times I get up here and I say, I'm going to try to be really quick, but in this case, we have a lot of information to go over and this is a very detailed submittal. So, we're going to go ahead and get into all the nooks and crannies. I passed out an updated staff report. As tonight is first reading, this means it is an introduction of the ordinance, we are not actually voting on the validity of the ordinance or, you know, if it will be the final adopted ordinance. But tonight is a good night for us to request any changes to either of these ordinances as necessary, that would make it more harmonious with the surrounding area or better meet the Town of Lake Placid's needs or even the developers' needs. So, that's my disclaimer, I also have another disclaimer, that when you look at these maps, you will see the, here, I'll show you for an example. The property line keeps kind of shifting. I haven't felt the need to invest in really good decent mapping software in the town because we get very few of these requests. So, these maps are just visualizations of the area, but it's not necessarily the exact property line. There's a survey in the packet that shows what the exact property line is proposed to be and how the property will be parceled out. So, what we're seeing on the screen right now is the entire property at 1249 U.S. 27 North and the applicant proposes to break off approximately 25 acres, which is that area shaded in blue, more or less. These two maps show the existing future land use and the proposed future land use. Now, this is where it starts getting complicated. This property, and I'm probably going to skip around my slides and I'm trying to give a high-level overview, but this is probably the most intricate planning project I have ever worked on. So, to give a little background, these properties, not only this property, but all the properties on this map here, the property that we're talking about today is a portion of this green area right here. But all of the properties shown on this map received a future land use change in 2010. Nine property owners got together and made an application to the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners, because it was in the unincorporated county at the time, and asked for a zoning change to mixed-use future land use. They asked for a certain number of homes and office square footage and industrial square footage and they broke down exactly how much would be allotted for each type of use. The green, which is the property that we're talking about, was allocated the use of employment distribution. There's a little bit of a disconnect if you look very far into the ordinance and into the conceptual plan, you'll see that this conceptual plan calls it employment distribution and in the ordinance itself calls it industrial square footage. Distribution isn't necessarily industrial, so we aren't necessarily using that language for this request, but it does, it is a distribution use, so it falls in line with exactly what the plan was in 2010 when these property owners came together and asked for this future land use change. As part of that future land use change, there were conditions imposed that both the owners of the property had to agree to and the Town of Lake Placid had to agree to. If a property is annexed in the town, like this property is, this particular property was annexed in 2019, if this property is annexed into the town, it can be developed under Highlands County zoning and future land use. But in this case, it could not because there were certain conditions in the future land use that never came to fruition. Those conditions were timelines that basically stated a certain amount of development needed to happen by a certain year and there's three categories, it was like a phasing schedule. And there was also a requirement for a development agreement to be recorded amongst the nine property owners. That development agreement would have further identified exactly which properties had how much square footage to develop. Because as I mentioned, we have a phasing schedule, but it didn't detail which property owners would receive which entitlements for square footage or density. We know the use, but not how much, basically. And that would have been determined at the time of development agreement. So, this plan was put in place in 2009, the property, I'm sorry, in 2010. The property was annexed in 2019 and now, in the year 2024, this is the first request for any of the properties in this 1,500-acre planning area. As the Town of Lake Placid, we have a duty to do our very best to comply with this plan, even though it was developed in the unincorporated Highlands County, because we have our LPRP, which is the Lake Placid Regional Plan Overlay District. We've discussed before and this particular area means that we planned, we got together with Highlands County and said, this will be the future of this area. So, it's in both the best interest of the Town of Lake Placid and the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners to work together in this area so that our overlay comes to fruition and remains in compliance. And then it's also important that Highlands County does the same thing for us. So, when we worked with these applicants to put together new site-specific conditions for this future land use, we tried to work with Highlands County and do it in such a way where we're respecting the existing plan, but also filling in some of the blanks, the things that never came to fruition. So, again, that question of how much? How much square footage is allowed on this property? And more specifically, you know, exactly what kind of uses are going to occur and these types of things that we're going to hone in on and narrow down through this hearing process. But it's important that you have this background on this property so that you understand the overarching framework that we're trying to work within. So, in the packets, you will have seen that there was an ordinance, it was ordinance 091025. That's a Highlands County ordinance. And again, that's the ordinance that we're working to respect. So, we aren't amending that zoning, or I'm sorry, that future land use outright because it's Highlands Counties and they have their site-specific conditions, but we are assigning our own zoning. Let me complicate it one more time. So, when we adopted the Lake Placid Regional Plan Overlay, we also adopted multiple future land use designations belonging to Highlands County. So, in our, in our comprehensive plan, we have adopted the Highlands County Mixed Use Future Land Use. And as a result, it was the recommendation of our town attorney that we use that future land use that we've adopted and apply it to this property. So, this is, we're applying for a mixed-use future land use. I can only make it more complicated from here. We're applying for a future land use that is a Town of Lake Placid Highlands County Mixed Use Future Land Use. It is adopted into our code, but it is a Highlands County Future Land Use. Again, trying to respect the existing planning area so that it doesn't become completely So, as part of this, there were site-specific conditions that are proposed. They consist of land use restrictions, which specifically state the property will be limited for employment/distribution uses and consistent with the Lake Placid Regional Plan Overlay District, that the property is limited to 120,000 square feet of distribution center uses consistent with the development plan and established by Highlands County Ordinance 091025. So, they submitted a plan, it has to be consistent with that. If anyone looks at the plan and is, has concerns or is not happy with the plan, then we definitely need to discuss that and address that today. It's saying that the plan will be consistent with the old ordinance, but it's also going to be consistent with this new ordinance. And there's a timeline of December 31, 2030. So, that basically means regardless of whether or not they break it into one phase or two phase, the entire thing needs to be constructed by December 31, 2030. In terms of site-specific, more site-specific conditions, it's a little redundant, but we go ahead and we limit the uses again to product assembly and we discussed this with some of their attorneys, that some of the products they bring in and they do have to assemble on-site, so they wanted to make sure that that use was covered. Warehousing, obviously, products are shipped in, they're stored and then they go back out. And distribution center uses as defined in the planned development ordinance. So, in the next ordinance, we go into a little bit more detail on that. So, going back to that plan we were talking about, the North Lake Placid Comprehensive Planning Area, when that plan was designed, again, it called for a development agreement. Not only would that... Not only would that development agreement have established how much intensity and density each property owner was allowed to have, but it would have also obligated the developers to each contribute whatever they determine to be their fair share of infrastructure improvements. You all have seen the area, you live here, you know, right now it's just orange groves, right? So, we don't have much infrastructure out there. We needed a new road, a safer intersection across from the hospital. We need water lines out there, all of these things, right? So, because this property's been annexed as the town, and we can come in and say, "We'll accept your proposal in compliance with the North Lake Placid Comprehensive Plan Area", which would have required water and wastewater connections, so we're going to require that too, and we need it to be safe. So, the requirements that have been built into the site-specific conditions are that a hundred-foot right-of-way for a county four-lane urban collector road, including a twelve-foot path from US twenty-seven at the intersection of Temoca Boulevard South to the existing Saint John right-of-way will be constructed. Yes, okay, they say dedicated or otherwise conveyed. So, on Saint John's, they're dedicating more land. As far as I know, there won't be any improvements to Saint John's for this development, because the developer is building a new road in front as well. And so, that requirement is that on Saint John's Road sufficient, okay, I swapped them, sorry. But on Saint John's Road, sufficient land for a one hundred and thirty-foot right-of-way, when combined with the, the existing right-of-way, for a county four-lane urban collector road extending along the eastern boundary of the property line to the northeast corner of the subject property. The developer shall, if permitted by FDOT, install a traffic light on US twenty-seven at Temoca Boulevard South. And we'll go a little bit more into the traffic shortly. The utilities that we required, as I stated earlier, we will require water and wastewater connection, and it's part of this plan, I'm sorry, the site-specific conditions. We are requiring that the property be rezoned to planned commercial development, which will be our next agenda item. Based upon the commitments herein and in the companion, um, companion planned commercial development ordinance, we would be finding that the conditions of the North Lake Placid Comprehensive Planning Area have been met, and that going forward, no other amendments could happen to this particular property unless they came back and go through the same process that we're going through now, which is a hearing before local planning agency and two hearings before town council. This is a lot of text, I don't expect you to read this, but I mostly put it here for me. Intensity analysis, so usually when I get to this point, I have a whole chart, and I say, "This is what the intensity was, and this is what they're going to, and this is what the increase is." But it was never hashed out the first time, so I don't know what the increase would be. But this is our opportunity to kind of review, uh, what's being allotted to this property and the other properties. So, as part of this, um, request, there have been no other applications. Industrial uses in the, in, in the area are limited to approximately a hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet of industrial square footage, and we're categorizing it under this limitation for these purposes. Um, the property owner has requi, or the applicant has requested a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of distribution uses on approximately twenty-five acres. So, going forward, if we have additional requests, our allotted square footage might vary. It might differ from what the original North Lake Placid Comprehensive Plan Area originally allowed. Uh, we haven't determined one way or the other if we would require everyone in that comprehensive planning area to stick to the one hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet if they can meet all the infrastructure improvements and requirements for safe development and traffic concurrency, and there's no concerns. It's one of those things where the town can, they have different authority as the town, and they can say, "We like your plan, but we're also going to add our spin to it, a little spin. We're going to give someone more square footage than maybe you all originally would have done." In terms of department comments, you all might have noticed we had a hurricane or two this, uh, this past month and a half. So, I don't know what it was, I didn't really get many responses, I sent the email twice. Um, a lot of either no comments, no objections, or no responses. So, there were very little comments, as I mentioned, um, no objection from fire services. Highlands County is just saying, you know, "We all have to agree on our traffic and our permitting, and we'll take care of that." Development Services didn't have a comment. Now, remember, I just want to emphasize that we were only obligated to send mailouts to the surround, the property owners in the surrounding three hundred feet. But we also notified every property owner in the North Lake Placid Comprehensive Plan Area, sent letters to every member of the Board of County Commissioners, Administration, and the Development Services Department of Highlands County. So, if for some reason they found our, or this application to be inconsistent with their planning area, that would have been their opportunity to make a statement or a comment. In terms of public facilities and services, town water and wastewater will be required. We have capacity for both, we have capacity for solid waste as collected by our town and, um, taken to the Highlands County landfill. The Highlands County Board of, that's an old remark, I'm sorry. We, there is no, um, student impacts generated from this development, so there is no acknowledgement from the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners. We do not, uh, Highlands County School Board. We do not have to coordinate with them this time for, um, commercial review. Okay, so I said we'd get back into traffic. There was a traffic analysis done, and if, I understand correctly, I think they're still going through the traffic approval process with Highlands County unless it, okay. Uh, so they're still working on that, and they have additional conversations to be had. But their traffic analysis basically showed that Saint John Street would be capable of handling the traffic as proposed, and they, there might be a traffic light coming. Again, it turns out that even if we all say we think a traffic light is a good idea and it's the best option for the area, FDOT might think otherwise. So, they are the final decision-makers on that traffic light, but this traffic study seemed to set it up to say that it looks like we're going that direction. And it's, I think there's another analysis that was going to be a part of this. In terms of recreation and open space, the open space requirement in the, so, this, there's like a little bit of crossover between the zoning and future land use right now. But based on their site plan, they would exceed any open space requirement that would be required by our code. They are going to request a planned commercial development without an underlying zoning district. So, it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples, and there's no requirement, a specific requirement for open space in the planned commercial development district, which we're going to discuss next hearing. But this is just a note to say, they, they meet that, they exceed anything that would have been required. And the developer is planning on contributing funds to the multi-use path that would be required along the new right-of-way. And that is one outstanding item that isn't fully addressed at this time, and definitely has to be worked on before we bring it back to second reading. Um, it's part of the ordinance, you will have seen a blank there. And we have options, we can either come back on a separate resolution if the applicant is open to that, or we can go ahead and try to hash that out by the time second hearing is finished on exactly what their numerical contribution will be. But again, I think the hurricanes kind of got us this month. We processed, we're trying to keep everything on track, but we couldn't quite line everything up just right this time. We'll get there. So, on the screen are the motion options at this time. I'm available for any questions, as well as the agent and the applicants. We also have Highlands County Economic Development in the House. So, I will turn it back over to our mayor.
Thank you. It's your turn.
It's my turn, thank you. Kimberly Sapp, representing the applicant, Ryan Companies U.S. I also have representatives from there. If there are any specific questions that the council members have, I think Dana did a good job kind of outlining our request for the comp plan amendment. Again, we're just implementing the prior plan, um, and I think we've hashed out some fairly specific, site-specific conditions for this project. Do you all have any specific questions at this time?
Well, I've had a couple people ask me what their timeline is, in other words, when, when would you like to be in operation?
They're looking at starting construction early next year and then being open by the end of next year. So, within twelve to eighteen months.
Uh, that's what I had heard from someone, but I, I just wanted to, to, to make sure that the information we pass out is, is correct.
Correct, yes. The river mill is, is strong, and in that case, good.
And how many jobs do you think it would bring into this area? That, you know, I, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but...
I, I don't have an estimate at this point in time.
You wouldn't, wouldn't be able to estimate at this point. Okay.
Yeah, we can have it at the next meeting and I'll get, and get that for you.
Okay, all right, okay, very good.
I have some questions, I think mine are mostly for Dana, though.
Oh, okay.
But, but don't, they could, um, just on the first complicated Highlands County and that where you said that the nine property owners had conditions. So, did all of those conditions expire? Or is there anything technically, legally that needs to be unwound in order for this to go forward?
Not necessarily, no. Because we are a municipality, we don't necessarily have to comply with every condition in that existing future land use, especially in this moment as we're assigning our own. An, an option, a solution to the entire planning area, that would be amazing if we could get to happen, would be if now I think it's ten or eleven property owners. So, all the property owners have shifted around, changed hands. Some of the property owners are the same, and they just own different land in there. It's just, everything's, you know. The best outcome that you could possibly hope for as a planner would be for everyone to come back to the table, hire an attorney on their end, get one development agreement together between all property owners, bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners, and since it's annexed, probably us too. It's just the feasibility of getting everyone back to the table when it's not, you know, they don't have a proposal in their hands, this particular property owner does. So, to get everybody back at the table is very, very difficult. And before this proposal came to us, this is an issue that we had been working on for over a year and a half, and had been struggling to try to figure out how we can solve it. And so, this is what we came up with for this particular, uh, property.
Then, second, Temoca's okay with the light? Has there been any, it looks like the light's right at the Temoca.
It would benefit in our, in our, it would benefit Temoca.
Okay, so you haven't heard from them either way, which means they had a chance to comment and they didn't?
No, I don't think anyone in Temoca would have received a letter, but there were posters posted to the property on twenty-seven and Saint John Street, so, and in the newspaper. So, it was notified, um, the same as any case would be, and no, I haven't heard any response from Temoca.
There were, there were some noted, letters across, I don't think any individual property owners, but I know the doctor's office, businesses across the street in Temoca were notified, because they were within the three hundred feet.
Okay.
And then, thanks to Milton, is why we skipped over the LPA this month? So, this will be first reading, and then it'll go to the LPA, and then the next meeting, come back to us for second?
Correct.
Okay, and then last is, because this is county, so from here, this goes to county and then to state? Or does it jump right to state?
No, so actually, it won't have to go to county. The only thing that really went to county was notification, so that was their opportunity. And then, the most recent case you all have seen has been a large scale. So, that means it went to us, the state, and then it's going to come back to us. This is a small scale. So, we're going to hold our hearings back-to-back, and then we send it to the state just for notification. They don't review it for any kind of compliance or anything of that nature. We're just notifying it and getting it part of the legal record of the state of Florida.
So, we're the authority on this one?
Yes. A hundred percent.
Just expedite everything.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
And then don't forget, this is on first hearing.
Right, right, correct.
So...
I have a question, if I read it right, the twenty-thirty completion date, that if the full hundred and twenty isn't built out by that time, they're done. Why was it chosen for a specific date?
I'm not sure the specific day really matters. I think it's more of like a month than a year, and I think there was a negotiation between our attorney and their counsel.
Let me rephrase it, why was there an end date?
To basically have an end date, to have a completion date. Right, if there was, I mean, if we're in the middle of construction and, you know, if we do a phase one, phase two, and we need additional time, it's, in the ordinance, we can come back to the board to ask for extension of time. But I think just in, in planning, they don't like having...
Indefinite, yeah.
Indefinite forever.
Okay, I'm being obtuse, I guess. Why have not twenty-thirty-five? In other words, if, and you are on the brink of whether or not to do the full build-out, and you're close to the deadline, and, um, I know you can get extension, but if you say, "Well, no, we've got this deadline, we better just drop it at seventy-five percent." We're losing, we're losing tax money, we're losing tax money by halting the full build-out.
Um, potentially, or maybe delaying it to some degree, but I think historically, and we, it is a discretion of the board if they want to go a different direction. Historically, it's been the opinion of the town that the economic circumstances could change, the, uh, environment can change entirely between now and then. Additionally, we do comprehensive plan updates every seven years. They're called evaluation and appraisal reports. So, and our comprehensive plans are in thirty-year periods. So, there's always like a, a period we're planning for, you know? And if our comprehensive plan only extends out thirty years, and then we're giving an indefinite approval, how can we make sure in twenty or thirty years that this still meets the goal?
Okay, so it's kind of a, never mind.
I think, I think it makes, you know, I think you brought, you bring up a good point. But either way, in Highlands County, they generally don't apply, um, completion or expiration dates, for the most part, so it really is a preference of the board.
But we would have, the applicant would have no issue going to twenty-thirty-five to give us additional time.
The date is certainly up to you all. I think it is good to have a sunset, because if tomorrow or after the final approval, they decide not to do it whatsoever, and it, it's pretty common that they, folks will come in and ask for vested rights, and then for whatever reason, don't move forward with the project. You don't want to find yourselves in ten years wondering, "Well, what do we do with this hundred and twenty?" And they, they sort of have it locked up, are they ever going to do anything? So, that just gives you some more flexibility if the, the good ideas and intentions today don't come to fruition.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the podium?
I just wanted, if we did a timeline on it, what the applicant would want on that timeline.
I think we initially proposed five years, and now we're at ten years out, or twenty-thirty, so what is that? Only six, okay. So, so they negotiated a little bit more time at some point.
And he said the end of next year.
Yeah.
For the first phase, and my understanding and conversations with them is that... And my understanding and conversations with them is that so the first phase is supposed to be built out within twelve months to eighteen months. But they kind of wanted to hold space in case they want to come back and add more. So just know that the first phase of this development is not going to amount to a hundred and twenty thousand square foot right off the bat. They're holding space so that they could do that later on.
All right, any other questions? We'll take it to the audience, any questions from the audience? Come to the, yeah, come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brittany Oles and my physical address? My physical address is 319 Flamingo Street, Lake Placid, Florida. I just have a question, are you able to disclose what this projected project is? I didn't hear anything about what it is going to be.
Oh, yeah, I'll say it's, I think it's already been disclosed, but yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'll defer to the applicant over here.
Look, it's, it's going to be a distribution center, but as far as the end user, right now it's Ryan Companies U.S. It's, who's going to be the owner of the property at this point.
Okay. All right, hearing no one else, bring back, poll the council.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I need a motion in a second, that's right, duh.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-11 LPCP.24.002SS on first reading.
I think we need to approve it. Did you say adopt? We need to approve it.
First reading.
First reading, I said.
Yes, approve it on first reading.
Approve on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anything else? All right, bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
I would like to vote, however, I would like to just throw it to our attorney tonight because the Davis family, Hayward Davis was my husband's sister-in-law's brother. And I want to make sure that it's okay with our legal counsel that I can vote.
You can vote. That familial relation is more remote than what the statute requires for abstention. So you, you may vote, given how far away that, that kinship is, you can.
Okay. Then with that said, then I would like to vote in favor, thank you.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I believe is number twelve.
Let me get the ordinance up here for you.
All right, we got ordinance 2024-12 Hayward Davis Trust, Ryan Companies, Kimberly Sap. Changing the official zoning atlas of Highlands County AU Agricultural District to PCD Planned Development District and add section 160-21 of the Code of the Town of Lake Placid entitled Distribution Center Planned Development Ordinance for a twenty-five acre portion of property located at 1249 US 27 North.
I am not sure if, it took me so long to pull up the short title, I'm not sure if we read the correct... Was it this paragraph you just read?
Yeah, this paragraph's different than the one I've got. You want me to read this one?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 2024-12, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid amending zoning classification of an approximate twenty-five acre portion of the property located at 1249 US 27 North, Lake Placid, Florida, from Highlands County AU Agricultural District to Town of Lake Placid PCD Planned Commercial Development to allow for a distribution center use.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was different.
Okay, piggybacking off the ordinance and public hearing we just had. We do need to read, read our, the public into the record if they have any testimony or comment. But before we do that, can we please go down the line and find out if there's been any expertise communication regarding this ordinance? If we, can we start with Ms. Everhart?
I did not bring, I did not bring my notes.
Oh, no.
Other than talking to staff, I believe that was it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Worley?
I don't even believe I talked to you too much about this, I don't think so.
Thank you. Mr. Holbrook?
Oh, excuse me, correction, staff and a representative from the Ryan Company.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, Ms. Hayes?
We, we had a meeting with the Ryan Company quite some time ago, but other than that, none.
Thank you. And Ms. Charles?
The only one would have been Sarah Rogers, the Economic Development, but I don't think that's an expertise. Other words, no discussions.
Great, thank you. As of this time, there have been zero letters received in favor and zero letters received in opposition to the request. The property again is located at 1249 US Highway 27 North. It's owned by the Davis Trust and the applicant is Ryan Companies U.S. Incorporated with the agent of Kimberly L. Sap. The applicant is requesting a rezoning for an, for an approximate twenty-five acre portion of the subject property described above from Highlands County AU Agricultural District to Town of Lake Placid PCD Planned Commercial District to allow a distribution center and add section 160-20 of the Code of the Town of Lake Placid entitled Distribution Center Planned Commercial Development District. So up here on our screen, remember the boundary lines are probably a little bit different than how it will really turn out, just based on my eyeballing of mapping. Right now, there's a zoning of agricultural and they're requesting planned commercial development. We can see the surrounding use, surrounding zonings on the surrounding properties, which are a mix of Highlands County Commercial, Limited Business District, Multifamily, and Agricultural. We've discussed the intensity of this property, that before there wasn't anything explicitly established, especially not in zoning, because it had inconsistent zoning and future land use. At the time when they applied this, they were just working to invest and entitle the property with certain rights. So they never did make it to the zoning portion. Again, they're requesting a hundred and twenty thousand square feet out of the one hundred and ninety-one thousand that was originally allotted as part of their future land use allocation. The surrounding properties, as mentioned before, have zonings of County AU, B3, R3. These are business districts, multifamily districts, and agricultural districts. The underlying future land uses also match with the exception of the surrounding properties that have the inconsistent agricultural zoning and mixed-use future land use to the north. Again, just really didn't get many comments back for this development. They will be required to connect to water, wastewater. We have capacity for solid waste. There is no student generation, student impacts generated from this development. The traffic analysis indicates that a light may be possible at the new intersection of Tomoka. They will exceed the standard for open space and they are also working on defining a contribution for the multi-use path. So these are the conditions. This is where we can really get more into the nitty-gritty. Not only does the property have site-specific conditions for their future land use, but they narrow those conditions and are even more specific when it comes to zoning. So as mentioned earlier, this property will not have an underlying zoning district. The zoning for the property is just PCD Planned Commercial Development. This means they have come to us with a proposal regarding every aspect of their development and it is completely tailored to this development. And if they ever change the use, they would have to come back through this process. The site plan is a required component. It's part of the ordinance and I, I have it on the screen, we'll get to it in just a couple slides. And they're requesting an intensity of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. We are also adopting the landscaping as part of the PD. So when we get to that as well, please advise of any concerns you might have because it will be completely binding and we aren't leaving much left to the imagination for staff to approve when it gets to that level. We want to make sure everyone is on board with this development. So the principal uses and permitted structures in this building are going to be for receiving, storing, assembling, displaying, shipping, distributing, preparing, selling, and serving as a pickup slash drop-off location for products, freight, materials, goods, groceries, food, and liquor items. So when this comes back for second reading, there will probably be a little bit more tweaking because I want to take some of this language and insert it as an accessory use. It says, you know, they can handle and store hazardous materials in the ordinary course of business. So we just want to make sure that that's really just an accessory. My understanding is, you know, someone might mail a car battery or there's, I'm sure they can expand on that. But there's certain things that might be distributed that might be considered hazardous, but it is not like a hazardous waste holding facility or anything like that. And then they also want to be able to, you know, have electric vehicles on the property if they choose to go that route. So some of this is more of an option for them. Because there's so much driving associated with distribution centers, they might also want to install their own fuel tanks or have a pump for them to pump fuel. No variances are allowed. After this is approved, any change or modification to this zoning will have to come back as a zoning change in the same process that we're going through now. All buildings from north, south, east, and west will be required to be set back seventy-five feet from every boundary. And I said all buildings, but I meant the primary buildings. If they need like a little storage shed or something small, like an accessory structure, where only, that is under two thousand square feet, the setback that is proposed is approximately twenty feet from the property boundary. The site shall be designed to limit noise and activities adjacent to the assisted living facility. So that's something we've been cognizant about as we've been trying to plan for this property is that there is an existing assisted living facility on the west, northwest, however oriented, on the side of the property, directly adjacent. So we want to make sure that there's no impacts, which is why you'll see in the landscaping, we've asked for that whole side to be landscaped and to provide a nice visual buffer in addition to the, the space, and there might even be a wall that comes into play. The site shall contain forty percent open space, so they, again, exceeded the open space requirements. And all exterior construction materials and finishes shall be concrete tilt-up walls and they will comply with the commercial architectural standards established in section 154-17. The most important thing about the commercial architectural standards is that we don't allow... You can have a metal building, but the facade cannot consist of more than ten percent metal. So rest assured, this isn't going to be just a giant metal building. Town of Lake Placid would never allow that to happen. And they specifically ask for concrete tilt-up walls, so, you know, that's fine. It's more visually appealing, but if council has a different thought, we can go there too. The property shall be irrigated and landscaped according to the landscape and irrigation plan that is attached as exhibit C. I'll show that to you in a minute. All signs shall adhere to the town code. Because this is in the LPRP, the sign is pretty small. It's like an eight-foot monument sign, so they're not going to be, but like a twenty-four, twenty-five-foot sign that you could see driving down 27. The property will contain not less than a hundred and sixty parking spaces and I will probably make a tweak to that by second reading, just for a little bit more context and information. Of course, the stormwater management district must be in compliance with all local, state, and federal regulations. And this, the next point of noise mitigation is where the wall comes in. The site plan has been prepared to limit noise to the surrounding areas, especially the assisted living facility. But the developer, from my understanding, usually has, I want to call it an acoustical engineer, who does a report on the property and if there's a certain amount of noise that can be heard, all the science, and I'll leave it up to them, but that might trigger the requirement in their eyes for a wall. And the wall, we put a requirement, shall not exceed twenty feet in height. The building itself will probably be around forty, forty-five feet. So it still will be shorter than the building. But that's specifically for noise mitigation. So we're not necessarily requiring that they automatically put up a wall. They need to go ahead and get a study and if it's required, they will, they will put a wall. And then we also put in a requirement for how far away it has to be. So if it's a twenty-foot wall, it has to be at least twenty feet away from the property line. In terms of fencing, we will allow fencing. Any fences, walls, or hedges that exceed six feet in height must be set back at least five feet from the property lines and interior to any landscape. So we require a nice buffering, but we aren't going to let them put a fence on the outside of it. We're going to make sure that the landscape is on the outside and the fence is on the inside, so it looks nice. Open yard storage shall be prohibited. So everything on this property and within this facility needs to be conducted within the facility, obviously with the exception of loading and unloading. We're requiring water and wastewater services. Concurrent is underway. All utilities will be maintained underground, which is more standard language that we've been inserted in a lot of planned developments in the last fifteen or twenty years. And then this is our question mark that we're going to be working on and coming back to you with. The developer shall pay before the building permit to the town, the sum of, insert number here, to be held and used by the town for the construction of a multi-use path within the town. So we've got to work on getting better numbers for that. And then we taught, these are the same, these are actually a little bit more intense transportation conditions. So the owner and developer shall dedicate to the Board of County Commissioners the necessary right-of-way along St. John's to amount to a hundred and thirty feet wide. They will also dedicate to the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners a hundred-foot wide right-of-way. This is the new road that we're talking about. As far as we know, Highlands County has been gracious enough to accept responsibility of this new road because it connects to their county-maintained road and to US 27. The developer shall construct the two-lane portion of new St. John's Road shown on the site plan. And the developer and owner shall convey to the Board of County Commissioners sufficient additional land for stormwater retention as required by the Water Management District and external roads shall be constructed to county standards. And even now, even then, with this information in hand, Highlands County and the developer will probably continue to refine and tweak their exact plans for, for how the road itself will be developed. But since Highlands County handles our transportation and they're the guiding force behind our transportation and these are county roads, we defer to them for this information. It's a, you know, we go over the traffic study and then we are also asking for curb and gutter along the new St. John's. And that's, that's something else the town has been focusing on recently. We really want to make sure we have curb and gutter, that it looks nice, it's kept well. It is maintained well and sticks around for a very long time. And that's what curb and gutter gets us. So this is the site plan, kind of one of those things, it's a little hard to see on a PowerPoint. But you can see, as of right now, the gray area, the darker gray area... But you can see, as of right now, the gray area, the darker gray area in the square that looks like a building, is what is currently planned. To the left of that is what could potentially be constructed within that six-year timeframe. All the parking is for employees and for their vehicles. And there's this solid line around the development. If my mouse is working right now, let's see. Here we go. This is like the seventy-five-foot setback line. Inside the setback, we have retention, so that's good. It, it provides a little additional space and buffering. Right here is where trucks will come in. And then this is the landscape plan, so... Because of the way the surrounding properties are zoned, intense landscaping really isn't required. But they have gone above and beyond right here with the assisted living facility providing additional landscaping. They're providing it all along their collector road, which our code does require landscaping along arterials and collectors, a ten-foot wide stretch. Saint John's is considered a local road, does not require landscaping. The one thing that I don't see here that we'll try to hash out by second hearing is our canopy tree coverage requirement, which basically states that if you have like a hundred thousand square feet of vehicular use area, then fifty percent of that has to be covered with canopy trees. Now, we've taken a bit of a stance that if they're requesting a deviation from that, that might be suitable, again, up to town council. Because this, this site isn't open to the public. It's not going to be somewhere where the public come and use the parking lot and park their cars. This is a work site. This is where people are going to come and, and do their job and they're coming in and out and it's not necessarily for the enjoyment of the public. So there's a little less of a push to make sure that they're going above and beyond in that area. So on the screen, you will find your motion options. I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant's and agent. And at this time, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask our town engineer if he has any comments, if everything looks good to you. Okay, thank you. Okay, bring it back to council.
Have a few questions. Can you just put the chart before up, just to... So the green and the gray is all parking and the, and the big rectangle is the actual warehouse?
Correct.
And, and so, and then the bays are in the front for the trucks to load and unload? Is, it's a twenty-four-hour operation? Yes?
Can we release that for the applicant?
Oh, so, so, and I think you've kind of answered it Dana, but I still want to go over... The only concerns I, I think I would have would be noise and light pollution with the assisted living center and that. And so it looks like, and I'm glad to see that the bays are in the front because that'll minimize a lot of that noise.
Correct.
But are the trucks the type with the backup beep 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 and are they going to hear that all the time?
Yes, they, I mean, they're semi-trucks and that's why we put in the... The requirement or the, or the ability to put in if we needed a wall for, for sound mitigation. And we put that in, I don't know that we're going to need that, but if we did, we didn't want to have to come back for another variance for that purpose, so... Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Max Bosso. Business address two oh one North Franklin Avenue, Tampa, Florida. I'm the vice president for Ryan Companies, the developer here. Uh, sorry. And just to expand on, on answer that question. So there are about ten to twelve trucks coming around twenty-four hour period. It's not all day long coming and going. And the new mechanism is when they put the reverse, there's no that big loud noise anymore. It's more of a humming noise that they makes. So it makes everybody aware, but it's not really that loud.
Okay, and that's helpful. And then the light, I think you were saying, from the parking lot, right? The lights from the parking lot, because that's kind of in the back corner there where the bedrock is. So that'll have filters or so, so that it won't in any way...
Not be aimed at the... And that's why when you look at the design that they, that they did, all the parking is basically street front and away from the assisted living facility to facilitate that and to make sure that they don't have light pollution or sound pollution.
And have they given you any comments or has anybody met with them so they know what the plan is for the neighbor?
They have been given notice of...
Have we received any comments back or any feedback or anything?
Asking about the neighbors?
Yep, bedrock. Pretty much, not the agricultural neighbors as much as the assisted, it's bedrock, isn't it? The assisted facility.
Yeah, I haven't, no, I haven't heard anything.
I think that might be helpful before it goes to LPA, just to make sure that they're aware and, you know, and I appreciate, it sounds like you, a well-developed plan, taken a lot into consideration. I'd rather hear things before than, you know, after. And then this one would be probably towards Burt, but, you know, we have backup here. But that one chart, you had that whole list of things that they're allowed is hazardous conditions, underground fuel, da-da-da-da-da. So that I'm, would ask to make sure that the attorney has gone over any of the conditions that they're allowed to do, which sound like more manufacturing than, you know, a warehousing.
It's not, we went through and Burt and I met with them and with their in-house attorneys on that and...
Yeah.
That is, yeah, I mean, as far as, I guess, he had a similar concern. When you mentioned hazardous materials, you know, but if they are transporting any kind of hazardous, they are going to be under such strict, stricter regulations than the town could ever even come up with.
Okay.
As far as if they're going to be scheduled when, if they're lithium batteries, they're going to be packaged a certain way and transported a certain way.
Okay.
And so it's not really the town's concern because they're going to be federally regulated.
My last one's an easy one. What is the concrete tilt up, tilt up wall?
Tyler LaMiller, my address is thirty-two oh one West Empedrodo Street, Tampa, Florida. The tilt up wall basically is a, it's almost if you want to say like a precast panel, but it's poured on the slab on-site. And what they do is just, it's like a, yeah, there you go. A six to eight-inch wall poured on the actual slab that's going to be there forever and tilted up. That's it. But, I mean, a lot of times in other places, you know, they'll actually precast it off-site and then bring it on-site. But this, this form of construction's casted on-site.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Yeah, this, this is a pretty standard construction.
I'm an accountant in finance, not an engineer. I was thinking it was the garage door that was going to lift up and that.
Well, you're, you're going to get an edumacation. Okay. All right, this time I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and make a mo, move to approve hearing, first, the first hearing. Upon first reading, LPTC dot two four dot zero six RZ, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve for first reading.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any further comments from the podium? Saying none, I'll take it the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
I still have to bring back the fact that the attorney says that I can vote.
You can indeed.
And so I will vote yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Lake Placid.
Upon first reading.
Yeah, from, from the looks of this, it, it looked like they've given all the consideration they can to the assisted living facility and I really appreciate everything they've done so far. Okay. Next, we go to item D. It's a request to build single-family homes on separate lots for the property bearing parcel ID. Dana, this is with you again.
Thank you, Dana Riddell, town planner for the record. I'm wanting to close this. There we go. Okay. So I'll just start on my statement of issue here. There is a property, someone asked this question earlier today, so I'm, I'm going to try to get in front of it and see if I can help to answer this. There is a property. It doesn't have an address assigned. It is on Hibiscus Street, close to the college. I made a map, here we go. So this is Hibiscus Street, right across here is South Florida State College. On the right over here is the old bank, I don't remember which bank it was. And then everything to the east from, I'm sorry, west from here on out is residential on the south side and on the north side is commercial. So you see this blue line, that shows the parcel line. Within that parcel, there are two lots. You see the numbers one and two. You see a dashed line down the middle of this parcel. These are two platted and recorded lots of record. That means at one point, the plat, which is like a map of the properties, basically came before the town council and the town council said, yes, very good, record it. Based on this plat, you can build one home on each lot. But then in the seventies, zoning happened. And it was at that time that there was a rule imposed in our land development regulations that says, if you own two lots that don't comply with our new zoning regulations, then you can't build on them separately. So in this case, these two lots don't, they're zoned R one A and they do not meet the width requirement or the minimum lot size requirement. And I have those actual requirements up here. So in the R one A district, the minimum lot width is supposed to be seventy feet with a minimum lot size of seven thousand five hundred square feet. These lots were approved and platted with a minimum width of fifty feet and a lot size of approximately six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. So the moment zoning was applied to these existing lots, they became considered non-conforming lots. And in order to build on these non-conforming lots, today, if one home was requested, I could approve that without having to come to you all. But if someone wants to build on each of these lots separately, it requires permission. So this isn't even like an ordinance or resolution, this is just a vote. And town council has the say on whether or not these lots could each contain one home. If you look in the area, I wish I had more maps, you could see it's substantially developed with one home per lot for the most part. There's some vacant lots naturally and some lots are built across two. Tonight, we have an agent with us. The applicant is Ken LeBlanc of Ashworth Homes and his agent is Ms. Bishong. If we have any questions for her, but we also have a survey, I want to make sure I show you this. We have a survey showing the width of the lots, right here, this is the width, and the length of the lots, each approximately six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five square feet. Now, with the lots this size, there is a minimum living space requirement of one thousand five hundred square feet. The applicant can meet this requirement. These properties can meet the requirement of the minimum living space of one thousand five hundred square feet. I do believe the applicant is going to come back and they will go to our local planning agency, not to the town council, because they would like to build smaller homes under that requirement for like affordable, more affordable housing. It might not be affordable housing, but more affordable. So just kind of, so you know what the next step is, if this gets approved, they might make that request. But other than that, that is the request on this particular property and I'm available for any questions as well as the agent, Mrs. Bishong. I'll turn it back over to the mayor and, let's see if I put a motion on here.
And I have a question for the attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm in negotiations, not finalized at all, with the applicant for buying my property down the street. Now, I had approval from the town council. I have four lots, a home exists on one and I have two lots on one side. One of those is in a different subdivision and then the other two are, that are vacant are in this subdivision. And so when I agreed to put sewer on my property where the house exists, now I want you to understand, these should be required to hook into sewer. Okay? So we're trying to get people to hook into sewer, okay? These lots, we should, okay, they hook into sewer, they hook into water, they're downtown. But I guess my question to the attorney before I get on my bandwagon, how much I believe in trying to build on these lots? Okay, because I have talked to the, this applicant about buying my property, can I vote on this or not?
If those two deals have any connection with one another, then no. And certainly that's the safe answer is to abstain, to avoid the appearance of impropriety. But if the two, if the deal to buy your property is completely separate and detached from whether or not this request gets approved, then you can vote.
Okay, well, on the, I think I should, maybe I should abstain just on the be safe side, just to be on the safe side.
It is easy and free for somebody to file a complaint with the commission on ethics and they will drag you through a knot hole.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that. I'd rather not vote, but I want to tell you how passionate I am about the downtown area. That's where I live. I bought these other properties. My son already has designed houses for the three lots that are vacant. If you go down Phoenix, we started rebuilding the downtown on these small lots with very energy-efficient homes. And if you go down there, my son designed homes that blend in with the, the frame homes, which I have, and the concrete block homes. And if you just go down there, you'll see how it blends in and it just was the beginning of the build-out downtown. We have a lot of small lots downtown. And my vision was if we could build out all these small lots. And it's something that was, you know, nice, I called it the cottages. The cottages downtown, if we infilled all of these small lots with nice homes, affordable homes, but these are also very energy-efficient, we built. But I'm just saying, if you did that, our whole downtown would be revitalized. I am so passionate about this, I can't tell you. Also, like in this little area, there's, there's sewer. And everybody's saying, oh, hook into sewer, hook into sewer. Here we have houses ready to hook into sewer. Okay, I did it. I'm on the low pressure. But all my three houses, my lots are all stubbed out for sewer. So if I had not been able, Dana researched and found, I couldn't find the letter I got from the town to say I could build on each of those individual lots. They're all stubbed out for sewer. We want to get people on sewer. Here's a chance, here's an opportunity. Instead of trying to get people that don't even want to be on sewer, we have an opportunity here and hook them into the new wastewater treatment plant, the reuse plant. So I'm just saying to revitalize the downtown, whatever we can do. I think fifteen hundred square foot minimum is insane. It's insane for most of, you know what it is in the county? Seven hundred and fifty square feet. Seven hundred and fifty square feet minimum to build on a lot. In town, it's fifteen hundred square feet. That's like a big subdivision, like a really kind of exclusive subdivision, fifteen hundred square feet. So what I'm asking you is... So what I'm asking you is, let this project go through, but when we do our revitalization, we do our overlay, these lots were planted back in the thirties.
Right.
The thirties, we have a PD. We have this downtown area planned, everything's planned, and I think we should go with the original plan. And it's some of the ones that do have alleyways, you can come in the back and fit the garages in the back and have the street front. It's just such a great idea to revitalize the downtown. So you can tell I'm passionate about it. But anyway, my lots are fine. I'm just telling you.
I don't think there's any such thing as being grandfathered in, but this would...
This is exactly what that does. This is a very common type of ordinance, because these were buildable lots back when that plat was approved by the county, so.
And actually, I think it's a great idea, I'm definitely for it. But we'll turn it back to council and see what they want to do.
I agree, because the home next to it is on a single lot. True, the one over is on two lots. But I, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
I like the idea as well. All the things that Deborah said, I know that area quite well, and I think two good-looking homes right there would do a lot for that.
I like it because it allows some affordability and walkability. Is that's what we really want to start doing, and wherever we can in the downtown area. So you're looking for a motion?
Need a motion in a second?
We'll do a motion. So I'll make a motion to approve on first reading, LPTC dot twenty-four dot zero zero nine, request to build single-family homes on separate lots for the property bearing parcel ID P dash O six dash three seven dash three O dash O one O dash O O one O dash O O one O, lots one and two. Is that too much to read?
A second, before she takes another breath.
Yes, we could just strike the words upon first reading. Because we won't come back for a second on this.
Okay.
Oh, does this go to LPA or no? This just is us?
This is final decision with us, with town council. But I did mention the LPA, because on a separate note, they'll go back for a smaller square footage.
Yeah, they'll still have to meet other requirements.
Right, but this is for our approval.
This gives them the opportunity to build two houses. Alright, so we have a motion in a second, and there are comments from the podium?
I didn't get a second.
Those two. They did it.
The black end over here, that's the white end.
Alright, hurry now, we'll take it to the audience.
For the record, Charlie Wilson, seven sixty-three Sunset Point Drive. The lot adjacent to it, was that actually part of the bank? Or is that another residential lot?
Yes, it's part, it's owned by the bank, and I noticed a portion of the bank's parking lot is in there.
I was just questioning whether that, that was part of the same parcel there. So there's not another lot next to it that's residential, that's commercial?
Correct, it's zoned commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
I'm going to abstain due to a business relationship with the applicant, and I'll fill out the proper paperwork.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash twenty-five. A resolution of the town council of the town of Lake Placid, Florida, amending rental rates for all town park facilities, setting rental rates for the town of Lake Placid Government Center to include inside-town limits and outside-town limit rate structure, repealing any fees in conflict herewith to establish town facility and event policies, rules and regulations for all town facilities, rentals, and events, providing for separability and conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this became before you as a little workshop, at one of our budget workshops, I'm bringing it back before you. One of the things that we figured out, that a lot of our town parks have been done with grant money, so you really can't do an inside-outside-town limit on the park facilities, because they're paid for with county grants or state grants. So you can't do an inside-outside-town limits on that. The building, the government center, we can do that with. So a couple of the recommendations, let's see.
And then the same with Dale Hall at one point, when we, when Dale Hall is...
Dale Hall will be treated the same as this.
That we can do an inside-outside there?
Unless we are going to use FERTAP grants and stuff like that, it would not be able to do the inside. So I kind of separated the government center, these rates, and then all park facilities. Recommending a twenty-five dollar bump for all the park facilities, regardless of inside-outside rate. I gave you a lot of historical, at one time it was like two hundred dollars, and the last years it's been fifty dollars for the parks, fifty and twenty-five dollars. So we haven't really had an increase in any facility increases to assist with keeping the parks nice. So, so council consideration is the resolution I presented for town parks, government center fees, rules and fee waivers. The fee waiver policy that establishes a council approval requirement. So for fee waivers, we gave you a list, the chief gave you a list of the, you know, the ones that we have events a lot, I don't talk well about. But anyway, I got tongue-tied.
Re-occurring details.
Re-occurring details, there it is. And then Alan will be getting some prices for us on how much it costs for public works. The thought process is to include those as automatic, to be included in our budget process. So we just go ahead and allow for the Canadian Festival, we allow for those those fees to be included just as an expense to the budget. And then also on the not-for-profits, for fee waivers, for general, for this building, to allow possibly for, especially for this building, for not-for-profits to have at least one automatic waiver. Just something to give back to the not-for-profits, but still be able to collect. Because the majority of the people or groups that come in here are not-for-profits. We are seeing some issues in the community room, we have a broken door, we have some of the laminates coming off, and just things that natural upkeep. And by charging just fifty dollars or zero dollars, weren't, there's going to be some expenses with this commercial, you know, the building. And then also for in-town, out-town rates. Most of the people that lease are outside of town limits, they're not the town taxpayer that pays for this building. So, so that's the reasoning for that recommendation.
Eva, would you mind elaborating on how much the cost of that door will cost the town?
The cost of the door, I think was about fifteen hundred? Fifteen hundred dollars just to fix the back door.
Just to give perspective.
And then we're having some, you know, the laminates around, you know, Formica, starting to peel off. We have stains in the carpet, starting to, because over time.
So are you saying an organization that used the facility damaged the back door?
Sometimes it's hard to pinpoint, we've gotten better since, so I took this over when Phil left, and we have gotten better, we have now a checkoff list for our staff. So after every event now, we're going. We're collecting more deposits on some of the, not the not-for-profits, but some of the not-for-profits to get deposits from them. But there's been just so, so much inconsistency on the old form, and everything was zero to fifty dollars, and so I'm just trying to, we're trying to tighten everything up. That way it's easier for, not just for staff, but for the public to understand exactly what, you know, what we expect here to.
What, like for the garden club, what are we charging them now for the hall?
Right now, when Phil, originally they were one of our first groups to come in, and they're, they're great. And then he did a five-year, which would end in May of twenty-twenty-five, and he was charging them twenty-five dollars just to use the audio. Again, there was not a lot of consistency, so they were like the first group that kind of came in, and that's kind of where it shook out. It was twenty-five dollars for the audio.
And what are we going to increase that to?
The way we have it set up is, well, the way I'm presenting it.
It looks like it's thirty-five dollars a month, or thirty-five dollars a time, that they would use it, am I reading that correctly?
It's twenty-five dollars.
I was thinking it would be non-resident, okay, twenty-five dollars.
So the non-resident would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, but twenty-five, we're going to do the resident fee for them at twenty-five dollars a month?
So the hundred and fifty dollars would be one-time fee, so it's a hundred and fifty dollars per month. So if you go to rent the community room, it would be a hundred and fifty dollars if you live in town.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking, I looked at conference room, not a community room. So the a hundred and fifty dollars would, would cover them for the year? Every, every month?
Every month.
A hundred and fifty dollars a month, I see, okay.
A hundred and fifty dollars a month, and then the recommendation to do one, for not-for-profits, one fee waiver, so take off a hundred and fifty dollars.
But if they're going to meet for, what did she say, eight months, that would mean they would still for seven months, they would pay a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, yes.
That's a lot. And what do they pay today, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
So it's going from twenty-five to a hundred and fifty?
Well, that was the recommendation for inside, it's up to council.
Okay.
If you want to do a separate rate structure just for not-for-profits, we can do that. But this is what I saw when I did all the research. Looking at other municipalities.
A lot of these organizations do a lot of good for our community.
That's what I'm saying, that's a, that's a big increase.
I don't know how we should structure it, but I think we should be more cautious of what they're doing.
Agree.
And allow them the opportunity to do what they need to do to help our community.
And it's not, it's not just the room, we have a full commercial kitchen. You know, those are expensive appliances in there.
Yeah, but I don't know if they...
We were blessed to get that included.
And this is all what plays in, I don't know if they're using that.
They do sometimes, but I'm just saying, I mean, if, if you're going to cook and stuff like that, that's one thing. But we do, whether they use it or not, we're going to have to replace all this stuff at some point.
We're paying for the electricity, we're paying for the water and sewer, we're paying, we're paying the maintenance. We have to have somebody here to open it up, we have to have somebody come back and close it up. There is cost involved, but I still, I still think for, at least the nonprofits that in town that, that do a lot for the town, we ought to maybe try to come up with something to, to help them out, plus our community. Just my idea.
I agree with that, I, I think that if we've got a business in town, right, and it's a nonprofit, that we should be a little more flexible. I mean, again, I've seen where you rent the room for a certain price, and then you want the kitchen, that's an additional, you want the AV equipment, that's additional. So there's kind of like a rolling scale of what are you going to use it for? But I do feel that there needs to be some type of consideration to our nonprofit businesses that, and I'm going to say within the town limits. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong in saying that, but I'm, you know, it's a town facility, we're paying the taxes, we're playing physically. You know, our taxpayer dollars are doing that, that we should give consideration to businesses that are supporting us. I mean, maybe we can get them to do some of our weeding, I'm just joking.
So clarification that the rate structure does not include separating out costs for using the kitchen. It's one fee to use that room when you use the kitchen.
I think, I think somewhere in the chart, there's, when you want to rent the community, your room, if you want, like, or certain areas, if you want garbage collection, if you want this, and if you want there, different breakouts. Maybe do that for this. Because some people, if they don't use the kitchen, why should they be charged for it?
I have to say, it's made it very difficult, because most of the groups use the kitchen. They may not use the stove, but they do use the kitchen. So that just adds another figuring, the way I looked at it when we did research, when you're researching these facilities, community rooms or town, you know, these halls, it's one fee for the entire room, so including, so most of the places do it that way.
Or what about a breakout if they do not, if they have it during working hours, and there's no lockup or open up?
So the lockup is not really an issue any longer, other than because we have now the door locks, that they get a code for the weekends. Harry will meet with the, the people and give them the code to get in and out, so we do not have staff here on the weekends.
Okay.
So there's, there's no, there's not any of that anymore, that's barely.
Okay, that good? Have they been paying twenty-five dollars a month?
I'm sorry?
Have they been paying twenty-five dollars a month?
Yes, yes.
Boy, I agree with what everyone has said, I think going to a hundred and fifty is a huge jump for organizations like the, the garden club that don't have a big treasury, and that would severely limit their opportunity to do the good things that they do for our community. But I think we probably have to go up a little on it, but and of course, we can't just do it for the garden club, we're going to have to do it for all the nonprofits that come, you know?
And that's the key word, nonprofit.
Yeah, we have to do it for all nonprofit, but what are we comfortable with? Are we comfortable with fifty dollars? And I, you know, I mean, I think we have to go up a little, but I think the one fifty is a lot. I look at it as what's our goal? Our goal isn't to make money. Our goal is to meet our expenses. And if it's during the day, the room's empty. But there's going to be cleaning, or there could be other things, so I, I feel, you know, just in my thought process, that, you know, that we should make sure we meet our expenses. And if it's a weekend, now you're talking, you need staff to come in, you've got maybe a little difference. So I mean, I, I, I don't think we're in the business to make money on renting out our rooms, that was never our purpose. In fact, the reason we, we spent the three hundred thousand to buy the bicentennial park was, oh, we could have, use it for birthday parties, we can use it as a smaller for a lot more things. And not that, okay, now we're going to get a good payback with our residents paying for it.
And staff's intention is not to make money, we were just looking at the wear and tear that's starting to happen in that room, and, and what the costs are going to be as that goes up eventually, you're going to need new carpeting, new flooring, you know, you're going to need it painted, and like I said, there's a lot of Formicas peeling off, that's going to eventually need to be redone. So that's the only reason staff went and looked at surrounding areas that's still lower than most of the surrounding venues around here. So that was the only reason. The other reason for the inside-outside-town rate was, majority of the folks coming in here live outside of town, we're looking at, we were looking at the taxpayers for that, because actually taxpayers pay for this building.
I agree, totally.
So that's why we were looking for, our intention is not really to make money, it's just to make sure that we're keeping it maintained. And carpeting is definitely going to be the next on, on the agenda, because it's, it's starting to really start looking bad.
So, so do we have any type of analysis that we've done on, like, in a year, how much is the income that we've brought in with renting it? And then second is, what are the estimated costs that we're going to need? Because that's kind of what we should be looking at, as far as, well, what do we think that our annual expenses for upkeep is? And then are we charging enough with the rentals that's taken place? And then at the same time, add some extra, because you're going to need to do the carpet, the painting, and the other replacement. That's kind of how I look at it, unless our goal is, yeah, let's rent it out and make some money here.
Yeah, and I agree with you, but to get the cost analysis is kind of hard right now, because there was such inconsistency on what we were, some we were charging, some we weren't, we weren't being consistent. So it's kind of hard to say without, and now, and little by little, it's gotten a little bit more consistent. We are able, there's been a couple of times that we have kept the deposit, you know, now that we're collecting them, and somebody has left or put nails in the walls, and we've had issues with that, so, so those kinds of things. I mean, we could do a separate fee structure, that could be, you know, inside-town for the locals, and then for not-for-profit, maybe fifty, seventy-five dollars, just a flat rate. But staff is not looking to make money, we're just looking to see, make sure that it's a fifteen-hundred-dollar door.
I think a hundred and fifty a month makes some good money.
Yeah, I mean, I went by surrounding municipalities, I went through a lot of surrounding areas, and that's the only reason that, that number actually was even lowered, and so.
Do we have an idea how much we've collected in the last year? Do we have an idea how much we've collected in the last year?
I do not have off the top of my head.
I mean, those are the things.
I can tell you, it's not, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
If you wanna put it off till next month, we can, but I am just telling you, when we get these, we've been in this building, how long have we been in this building?
Twenty seventeen, no, twenty-seventeen?
Two thousand seventeen years, I think. Yeah, so eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two. I'm just saying, you can, you can look at the expenses, okay, the carpeting is now, and it wasn't used very much before we came here. So you can say, okay, we've had this much use on the carpeting, how much is it gonna cost when we replace it? It's not a few hundred dollars, it's thousands. When we have to, we have to replace a commercial refrigerator, it's thousands, it's not like, it's just a little bit of money, you know what I'm saying? It's like big expenses, and you can do it, you, we can plan, we can say, okay, the carpeting's this long, this is how long, and this is what we're gonna have to come up with in about this many years. And we can do the same thing with all the others, but it is hard. I mean, I haven't seen one group, whether it's a funeral or anything, that doesn't use a kitchen. Now, they may not be cooking, and they may not be doing stuff. Normally, they use the refrigerator, maybe the freezer, they use the wash things.
The heating tray and all that.
Right, they're, they're using the facility, the whole facility, and it is wear and tear. And when we bought the building, we got all the tables and the chairs and all that for free, but now, we're using them. And they're getting stored and brought out, and they're, they're gonna wear out, and then what are we gonna do? Are we gonna ask the town people to pay for a community room that everybody uses? I'm just, I'm just looking at it that way. Yeah, we have it, we, you know, I'm a planner, so I like to say, how, what is the use of this carpet? So we gotta make this much money every year to replace it in a few years. Well, we've been using up that time being here, so, um, but I also, you know, I don't wanna change the subject until everybody's ready. I'm just saying, and I'm not saying overcharge people, I'm just saying we have to protect the town interest and make sure that we're not gonna end up replacing all of this, because we're good hosts, we are very good hosts.
I, I'm just curious, um, how many, uh, trying to say this without sounding really stupid, uh, how many non-not-for-profits do we have that use this community room?
Majority of them.
Quite a few?
Quite a few, majority of them. Majority of the people that rent this facility are not-for-profits.
So the majority are not, not-for-profits.
And we have some smaller groups and some church groups and...
So, uh, am I, am I correct in thinking that we could, we could kick this, uh, this one fee for the not-for-profits down to, let's just pick a number, let's say fifty dollars a month, and, but keep it at the hundred and fifty for all the others that are not non-for-profits? And we would have enough money to cover what Ms. Worley is talking about as the expenses? You think, folks?
I think so. So would you still have the out-of-town limit three hundred, or did you wanna reduce that? For people that live, not, not-for-profits, but the other, people that live outside of town.
I would have, I would, I would expect if somebody is gonna use this and they don't live in the town limits, that they really didn't, um, have as much put forward to this that the others, so I would charge them more.
I can tell you that I used it for a, a private client, uh, out of, not a resident, and certainly not, uh, not a not-for-profit. And you can't rent half of that size for at least two or three times the money if you look elsewhere for space. I mean, that is the deal, even at three hundred dollars, that's a sweetheart deal.
Okay. Right, and that's what I was gonna say, I, I'd like to kinda break it into almost three buckets.
Okay.
One is, kind of to the staff, is, we do need to start estimating, well, what are all of the, you know, expenses? Carpet, everything, and then what's the best date that we may need to re, re, repair or replace that? I mean, that's just something for us to be smart as far as a future budget. So I wanna take that to the side, but those are costs that definitely need to be on our radar. Um, the second, I think that we do need to give consideration, just like the mayor said, to our nonprofits in residence, right? Our businesses in town, that we need to give them, um, a lot of consideration, because they're all doing good. And, and they're supporting the town in various ways. I totally agree, and that's what I was gonna say, you can't rent for birthday parties, you know, for weddings, for showers, you, even those, the variety of reasons people are renting it, um, for seventy-five dollars, a hundred and fifty. So I, I totally agree, that needs to be a, a, a competitive price if they were to go and rent, you know, Pasadena Farm or some other, you know, the, the Amvets or the Elks or somewhere, that we need to have a competitive price, not per profit as much, but a competitive price. And I do believe, depending on what the event is, clearly a deposit and probably a cleaning fee. Because on some of these where they're using the kitchen, they're having showers, you know, funerals, whatever, full-service meals, we know the carpet is getting, you know, stuff on it and that. So I mean, to me, anywhere that you go rent for, for a private party, you're paying a deposit, a cleaning fee, and an hourly fee sometimes, or a three-hour block or something like that.
So what we have done, because we have limited staff, to be, I mean, we have Jose, but, events go, they know that they have to clean when they're done. If they don't clean, that's when their deposit can be, uh, reduced, instead of having a separate cleaning fee. So they know that we leave them, we have the vacuum, we have everything ready for them, they have to take their garbage in the back, they get their full deposit. Now, I show up in the deposit from a hundred and fifty to two hundred, um, to, to change that dynamic. But we've only had it a couple of times, like the Garden Club, they do a wonderful job there. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to, we're not trying to, as staff, we're just trying to get some balance in there, so, 'cause we see it, you know, the wear and tear, so. But if you wanna do a separate rate structure, and we wanna do fifty dollars, I can just go ahead and insert that and correct the resolution to fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars for in-town limits, people with addresses within the town limits, um, and then three hundred for addresses that are outside of town limits. The only question is for businesses, somebody doesn't live in town limits, but they have a business in the town, they're still paying some sort of taxes, would we include, allow that? That would be one question.
I feel businesses is resident.
I, I agree.
Now, my only, if it's twenty-five today and we're going to fifty, that's a hundred percent increase for, for our nonprofit in town.
So the only, the only one that's paying.
Yeah, we're not going to a hundred and fifty, which is a bunch.
Well, and I'm not going to a thousand either, but I, I still feel if, if you're renting it eight months, eight months of the year, nine months of the year.
So they are the only ones that pay twenty-five? It's basically been, it's zero to fifty for the room rental, that's what was on the old form. When I took over, I charged fifty dollars. Now, you add some of, I mean, so I went by what was done, you know, instead of the zero to one-fifty, because it was very subjective for somebody that's trying to organize that, and some, some were paying, like, the Garden Club was paying twenty-five, some were paying none. So it, it, we needed to tighten up something, we have to have something. If you want it to be twenty-five for everybody, for not-for-profits, you know, that's up to you. But as long as we have a set dollar amount that, we're, we're not subject, having to pick and choose who gets that.
How many organizations use it every month?
Oh, we're pretty busy most of the time. But, uh, uh, right now, we have the Garden Club, we have two events a year from the Women's Club, sometimes three. We have a graduation in May that they're...
No, I, I understand that, but I, I'm, how many rent a building every month for nine months? How many organizations? Just the one?
Just, just the one organization that does the nine.
Maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's something we could do on a yearly basis with them then, instead of a monthly basis, that would be feasible for them and us, just something to think about.
So do we want to hold up this whole fee schedule because of this one line? Or can we approve this whole fee schedule with the exception of this line, and we can come back, uh, and, and revisit it maybe next month, and after doing some research on this, things that Ms. Charles brought up and things like that? Can we do that?
I think, I was thinking that was just a whole separate, right, that we need to figure out what the costs were.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that doesn't need to be in this meeting. I, I mean, I'm fine to come up with what is the, I think where we're apart right now is for nonprofits monthly.
Yes.
You know, and what I just heard is, the Garden Club, Club has kind of had a little side rate going on for them, but I also heard some businesses have another side rate where they pay nothing.
Yes.
And so that's going to bring them up, you know, to pay in something. I just, where I struggle is going from twenty-five to fifty without really knowing what the costs and, you know, is that enough, or do we need to do the one-fifty? I'm just, just throwing out numbers. But I'd like to be able to see, if this is the only thing, let's knock it out, come up with a price and move forward. My only other question would be, I'm assuming that when this is made, it's for reservations prospectively, not retroactively? So, so somebody already signed.
Not retro, I have told, we, we have, I have reservation forms sitting on my desk right now, all the way in twenty-twenty-five, that I have told them that this was becoming before council, and that I would get back with them on the fees.
See, see, where I guess I'm thinking is, if somebody's already got a reservation, that, that it was based on a fee structure at that time, you know, that, 'cause they're doing some planning, that that would be the fee structure.
So a lot of the ones are...
And it would be new applications as they're coming in.
I think what she's saying is that she's, she hasn't given them a price, because she's waiting to hear from us. Is that what she said?
So I have told them when they send in theirs for twenty, I'm talking about, we have quite a few reservations that are, I, I, twenty-twenty-five, I told them I will hold it, I've given them a ballpark, I said, council may come in low, council, I don't speak for council, but there's going to be a fee change. I only had one person say, never mind, they were outside of town limits, if it did go three hundred. She actually turned around and found somebody with an address in town limits. So...
Basically, she's saying that she hasn't told them.
So, I, they, they're all aware, I've called them and talked to them, we have one in May of twenty-twenty-five. I really was like, that's all so far in advance, that I wanted to just wait till council made, you know, come to a decision on it.
So the question is whether do we grandfather them to the old thing, 'cause you have the paperwork?
Well, I have the paperwork, but they haven't received final approval from me, so...
Right, so, yeah, so what I'm hearing is she's already told them that, look, and I'm gonna sit on it until it's approved and it's gonna change. I was thinking if somebody already had the date on the calendar and they had paid for it.
Those were grandfathered, the ones that I've had that I've been kinda, because this is, majority of this has been done since March, we've kinda been waiting. Um, so those, it was a regular fee, and if they didn't have a fee, they didn't in the past. So, um, the whole idea is just to start tightening it up a little bit.
So the, are there, are there not-for-profits that are paying fifty dollars a month?
There, yes.
Yes.
So you can't reduce it, you gotta stay with that. That's, that's what I was thinking, if you go with thirty-five or forty, then you're gonna lose the money that you've already got regular people.
And they haven't had an issue with the fifty.
But, but the Garden Club's the only one that's doing monthly, did you say?
They're, they're the only ones that are here monthly, yes.
And the other ones that are getting charged fifty, are they like just quarterly, once a year?
Yeah, twice a year, you got the Women's Club, and I think on the Women's Club, I ended up charging them the last time, but prior to that one, or Phil and everything, there was no fees whatsoever. And we also have, we go through cases of toilet paper.
You wouldn't?
You know, when we have large groups here, so, that's all we were just kinda looking at, trying to balance it out.
And there's administrative costs associated with it.
So, I mean, the fifty for most of the not-for-profits have been fine, you know, and I, and I understood. I was taking the one-fifty from other areas, but, you know, very well understand that the, in fact, I'm the one that talked to Karen and gave her an update, and she says, you know, uh, because, you know, we like working with them.
So could we say, um, the twenty-five dollars a month for not-for-profits, with a, with a minimum of six months, meaning once, once a month for six months, or more, in a year? Anywhere from six to twelve months in a year. And then, um, anything less than six months, they would pay, what do you think, fifty? Whatever they're paying now?
I feel that's an administrative difficulty for staff, when we start doing, well, how long are you gonna rent it? And how many months are you gonna rent it, and who are you? I, I personally, after listening to all this, would rather this, especially since she's charging fifty now, I'd rather go with the fifty, and as the mayor was suggesting, see how we can work out separately, if we're allowed to do that, you know, kind of any adjustment of fee for the Garden Club. 'Cause they've been using it, they're paying twenty-five, they're using it the most, nobody else is using that. They're a good organization for the town, and maybe we can get some free weeding done in return.
Is, is it, is it bad to say grandfather them at twenty-five?
You could provide provision for council to establish a rate on, on a, you know, case-by-case basis.
I don't like the word grandfather and rates.
Yeah.
Especially if they're doing a service for the town, not just...
Well, on a case-by-case basis, we're gonna have them on the agenda every month.
They will likely all come in every time.
They'll drive you crazy, that's why I was thinking that grandfather for the Garden Club is like a, a wide brush just for that.
So does that waiver, like giving them, some of these nonprofits a once-a-year waiver of that fifty dollars, whatever is...
You're doing that now, right?
We're not doing that now.
I assume, because I read somewhere that if they just use it once a year, they're waived.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to give, to give staff the option.
That's gonna continue.
Yes, it's built into the, uh, resolution, to allow staff to say one...
One waiver, yeah.
One waiver for not-for-profits. For example, the Garden Club has two to three events, one of those events would be waived, and then the other two.
So our Rotary Club that has a banquet at the end of the year, and we only would meet there one time, we would be waived?
Mm-hmm.
So we wouldn't have to pay for one time.
That, I mean, that would be up to you if you wanna make that, you know?
But we, but we would charge the Garden Club twenty-five dollars a month because they're there every month. But if you only come once, you pay nothing.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda just throwing this stuff out there.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get it in my head, you know?
Um, that was just two examples from other municipalities that were doing that.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense? What, that, that if you, it, does this make sense, that if you're there every month, you pay twenty-five, but if you're only there once, you pay nothing?
Maybe more than one event, if they hold more than one event, we can waive one. So if you only have one event, you're gonna pay, but if you have more than one event with us, we'll waive one.
I see, okay.
And that's today.
Just, just to make the, the, try to clear this up a little bit, when she's discussing having one event a year, she is talking about a country fair, a cladium fest, things like that, that is a not-for-profit that we waive once a year.
Okay, but the community room fees...
No, but I'm also talking about the community room.
We're talking about the community room fees, is she, are you waiving those, that once a year also?
For not, we're just dealing with not-for-profits.
The not-for-profits.
Strictly not-for-profits.
You know, the cladium festival and those groups, we're gonna put it all in one, uh, one group.
One group, two groups.
Yeah, they're in separate groups.
Today, a nonprofit organization that uses the meeting for an annual, the room for an annual meeting, doesn't pay.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I'm just today, that's today, and, and I think you're saying that will continue. But if you're going to rent the room more than once a year, then you're gonna pay.
And you're gonna pay, for a nonprofit, you're gonna pay twenty-five dollars a month, or a time, twenty-five dollars a time?
Fifty, fifty.
Oh, fifty dollars a time.
And today, they pay fifty.
So if we have more than, a not-for-profit that has more than one event here, we waive one fee, we waive once. If you have one event here, I say you pay the fee, but you, you pay the fee. It's, it's when you have multiple events that we would allow, that council would allow for a waiver, for one time.
So that's a change for this fee structure?
This would be, we've never had, we've never had this process at all, so...
So your Rotary would then pay for their, you said the Christmas party?
Well, we just didn't pay last time, and I wonder why we didn't.
So really, the Garden Club is the only one that's, because it's at, been set at twenty-five dollars, if I can, just trying to make sure I've got this right, because it was originally established that way under previous administration, because a room wasn't really being used.
And it was a five, five-year, so, in other words, a grandfathered in.
Five-year agreement, correct. But everyone else, they're already paying fifty. So if they have, if they have a five-year agreement, then why are we talking, what, when does it...
Because it'll lapse in May.
It lasts, okay.
In twenty-twenty-five. It'll lapse in May.
Why are we home?
Free weeding. So even if we kept it at the fifty dollars, then it would be a twenty-five dollar increase for them opposed to a hundred and...
Fifty dollars the following, the following September if they came back.
A hundred and twenty-five, I should say.
I'm not sure of where we are now. Are we still saying twenty-five dollars for the Garden Club and fifty dollars for everybody else?
If we leave it at fifty, then that means it stays at the same and it doesn't increase for anybody.
Yeah.
So the Garden Club lapses in May of twenty-twenty-five, that agreement they had with Phil. then they would go to fifty, if that's, everybody would be fifty. And then if they have more than, I'm just talking it through, I'm not, so if they have more than one event, then you have the ability to waive one.
How, how is the gar, how does the garden club feel about that? How does the garden club feel about that?
About fifty dollars?
Yep, that would be okay. Margaret, well, you, you're dying over there.
Yeah, I am.
I can tell, come on.
I'm Margaret Dear, and I'm treasurer of the Lake Placid Historical Society. You guys bought this building knowing that you were gonna have to do repairs and maintenance on it, and you got a commercial kitchen, and I'm sorry that that equipment's expensive, but when you bought it, you knew that you were gonna have to replace it. The taxpayers bought it. Sure, there should be some cost for private events, but us nonprofits, we're providing services that the town doesn't. There is no cultural affairs, there is no recreational affairs, the garden club's providing activities for their citizens. The museum sure as heck is providing services on behalf of the city, or on the behalf of the town. If somebody wants to come in here and have a meeting during business hours, when there's people, staff sitting here all day long, and all they're using is a refrigerator and the ice machine, they shouldn't, they should be paying this much, this much, for a two-hour meeting. I understand that there should be some sort of cleaning deposit or some sort of cleaning fee if somebody's messing it up, but, I mean, really, y'all, you gonna run people off, you can go to the library and use the library rooms for free. That, I mean, is that really what, how we wanna treat our nonprofits?
So Margaret, how many times a year do you-
The historical society's only used it once.
You only use it once?
We have the luxury of, of having some space, but what we'll do is we'll end up saying, hey, garden club, y'all wanna come over to the museum and meet? And then you're gonna end up with a building that's vacant, that nobody wants to come and visit or participate in at all. I mean, I get it, I get that we need to pay for this building, but I would not put the onus on the nonprofits that are having business meetings during business hours, that's not requiring any additional, any additional staff. That's just my, yes, I was dying to say it, I gotta protect my, my nonprofits, my peeps, thank y'all. I know you'll do the right thing.
So you think nonprofits should pay nothing, ever?
Ever. If it's, if it's during administration hours, not outside, Monday through Friday, nine to four, say, a two-hour meeting window.
But, but you're not taking into consideration that the carpet will get dirty, whether it's administration hours or not?
Well, I mean, now the carpet's gonna get dirty anyway.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, but, but-
So why would they pay zero?
Why in the world should, I, I mean, you wanna, we're not paying to come to town council meetings and we're dirtying up the carpet. We're not paying to clean it.
Yeah, but we have to do this.
I mean, that's the truth, I mean, that's just the truth, I mean, that's the way I see it.
Unfortunately, we have to do this.
But, I mean, I get it, but that, but, but again, the town bought this facility knowing that they were gonna have to pay to have it cleaned. That I think that having nonprofits come in and they gonna dirty up the carpet, but if you wanna nickel and dime everybody to death, then you gonna get nickel and dime. I, I mean, is that the message that we really wanna send? Otherwise, I'm gonna be standing up here saying, all right, what is the town providing for, for this? What's the town providing for this, and what is my rental money giving me?
Well, let me say one thing, okay, the library, I love the library, you know, I'm a library girl, okay? But they are owned basically by the county, that's a hundred, about, a little, probably over a little hundred thousand people. Do you know how many people were twenty-five hundred people, men, women, children, that live in the town? I'm just saying, we, we have to look at the expenses and say, how are we gonna do it?
I'm gonna ask you this, and if your town attorney was here, he would answer the same thing. You charge a thirty-five dollar a year fee for a business license fee, thirty-five dollars a year.
I don't believe in that.
Is it really going to be worth, to somebody like the garden club, for you to collect, what, an extra thousand dollars in meeting room fees?
I don't believe in the thirty-five dollars, so you're talking to the wrong person.
But I mean, is it really worth it? At the end of the day, is it really worth that extra thousand dollars that you would get charging nonprofits to use the community room? That's my only point. That's my only point, given the services that we provide, Lake Placid residents, and you're gonna charge us just to have a meeting here? That's all I'm asking you to consider, and certainly not to the tune of one hundred and fifty dollars every time. That, I think, is criminal. That, I think, is awful.
That's off the table, anyway, we're not gonna do that.
But that's what it says.
But we said, no, no, we said, didn't we say that we're gonna have a, if you have an event, you get an exemption? The only aberration is when they come every month.
Right, but, but for a meeting, I mean, you, call it an event or call it a meeting? But I, I mean, this is a meeting. Anyway, that's my piece, thank you.
So, Eva, then if we have enough outside business in the non-not-for-profit area, would it cover the expenses for the not-for-profits if we charged them zero? Because I don't want to look like we're being fiscally irresponsible, and I don't think Kalina let us do that anyway. But, but, I mean, do you think, would it cover?
That gets back to the question I asked earlier, is how much are we making? So maybe we need to get some more details of, between the nonprofits and the outside, maybe in the last year, how many, how much, and then separately, the best estimate of, I mean, the commercial ovens and that, I mean, yeah, they're gonna need to be replaced over time, but trying to say which organization created that, it's a whole different. But carpet and other, what are those expenses that we're talking about, to be able to, to do that analysis of where is the breaking point? And I respect, Margaret, I respect the comments that you make, and just to clarify, that one-fifty became off the table right away. Right away. It's, it's minimum fifty, but what we're finding out now is some get twenty-five, some get fifty. So it's what's a sweet spot there, and maybe we don't have enough information today. Oh, some are zero.
Some zero, it just depends the way, precedent, that was before.
So I think we just need to get some numbers so we can make an intelligent decision, because you made some excellent points, right? Is, and we do respect the nonprofits, and at the end of the day, if we price ourselves out of it, they're just gonna go to, you know, the Masonic or another building, and then it's gonna be an empty building.
Well, I'm just, I, I wanna support the nonprofits, and, Margaret, I agree with you for once, write this down, but, but I, I think we, as, as Kalina said, I think it's important that we know, to be fiscally responsible as a, as a council, do we know that we have enough outside sales that would give us enough money to cover the basic cleaning and, you know, et cetera? I feel like the, the ovens and all the commercial equipment, and even replacing the carpet or furniture, those are capital expenses. I, I think that's in a totally different pot of money, in a totally different section of the budget, that, that I just wanna make sure that we're charging, we're, I wanna make sure that we have enough events on the, on the books, or conceivably on the books, that are not non-for-profit, that are outside events, that are gonna bring us in enough money to consistently clean the carpet and, you know, just maintain. So that's my question.
I do wanna say thank you, I know Eva has done a tremendous amount of work.
Yes.
A tremendous amount, and I mean, probably a lot of this is even eye-opening of the inconsistency that we have to date. And then I know you're checking with other organizations what they do, so I don't wanna discourage you at all. This is, this has been great work that you've put together, and I think we're close to the finish line, we just, I think to help us, it's to take this responsibility seriously, I, I would like some more information.
So, so I foresee possibly, not a hundred percent, once the, forget the not-for-profits for right now, once we get to the three hundred dollar mark for outside town limits, there will be a reduction in some of the rentals here. Because I know the groups that are coming in that are doing, that, that are paying the fifty dollars. And, and so that might be, I'm just saying, as we look at costs, that, that's gonna, there's gonna be a fluctuation for sure.
Right, it's competitive pricing for them.
But that's expect, that's expected.
Yeah.
Because right now, for some of those groups, I'm not talking about not-for-profits right now, I'm talking people that come in and do a baby shower and do these other items, or even some of the little groups that, they tell me they're not-for-profit. We haven't put real teeth into it, but I, I intend to, that they have their five-oh-one-three C to prove they are not-for-profit.
Right, you have to, have to bring that in.
So I have some groups that I know are not really, you know, some of those smaller groups that have come in. So, I mean, you know, we can, we can go back and kind of see what the expenses are at this point, and maybe get some estimates. So we wanna hold off on, on this.
I'd like to table it till next month, and I would really be interested now in, you know, the users that are using it, just the number, how many, and, and also on the weekend. I think that, that whole weekend is a whole different animal, and, and so during business hours, whatever information you have, I think would be helpful for us, between the, the nonprofits and the not-for-profits.
So just for some guidance, because I've been talking to people that wanted the room for next year, I've kind of put them on hold. Do you want me to go ahead and continue to put them on hold, or let them pay with the fifty dollars?
If it's a nonprofit, why wouldn't we go ahead?
Not, not for, some of these are not-not-for-profits, graduation parties, anniversary parties, those type of things.
Put them on hold, tell them, sorry, it got tabled, you have to wait another month.
Do they know what the fee structure increase would be?
I've given them a ballpark.
Yeah, so I mean, then they may choose.
So, so far, only, like I said, only one said, never mind.
Okay.
And once I, they were outside of, of town limits, so.
Right, do we have to have a motion to table it?
You can simply take no action and then bring it up next time, but you can table it, if you'd like, either way.
Just push it.
Either way.
Just, real quick, attorney, this is a true story, attorney swing, okay. So in two thousand and six, Target was looking at our area, and they were working with me. So they didn't wanna come down here, they wanted to meet up in Avon Park for whatever reason. I rented a conference room for two hours, and I paid a hundred and fifty dollars for two hours, just to have a meeting there. Okay, I'm just saying, two thousand and six.
And where was that?
Up in Avon Park.
Well, that's, there again, that's Avon Park, we're Lake Placid.
No, I'm just saying, it's a-
I'm, I'm sorry, but, we call this a mucun, a community room.
If we had been down here, it would have been a hundred and fifty dollars.
When we bought this building, we wanted it to be friendly for our, our residents. I just don't want us to knock ourselves out of the ballpark.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying it's fifty dollars.
And I think that's, to me, I'm sorry, that's what it is.
Still, that's a great deal, that is, we're not knocking it out of the park. I, you all, I'm fine with everything, I mean, I just think we need to get, let's just get a cost, on what it would cost to replace the carpeting, just one thing, in that, in the, in the community. Just one cost, how much is it gonna cost? Because that carpeting's getting used, and before we bought it, it wasn't getting used at all.
And there again, that's why we have a budget, and I'm sure that's, we have that in the budget to take care of things like that.
We, I don't think we've planned on it.
But, that's, that's just something we need to look at, but.
Right, that's, and then-
But I, I, I just think we need to take care of our, our nonprofits, just because of what they do for our town and our community. And the others, yeah, they're gonna pay their fair share, I think that's only fair. But we, we just, I, I think we just need to step up and take care of our people.
I think Ms. Finnis has been wanting to talk.
Can, can we just take no action and move on, because it's getting close to my bedtime now?
Mayor.
Yeah, Pam, come on.
Pam Finnis, one, two, three, seven, three, Lost Lake Drive, Lake Placid. Um, just a couple of things, the Boy Scout old building, the old bicentennial park, so you paid three hundred thousand for it, like, four months ago, and you're talking about opening it up to the public. You did a phenomenal job collecting all the different information, I was impressed. I skimmed over it, but that building is not in here, so if you're gonna table it, perhaps y'all need to have that discussion on whether that's gonna be included or not, and is it open to the public? Just a little bit of history, the previous town administrator, two or so ago, discouraged the use of this town hall for outside events. Good, bad, that's in the past. So if you pull, like, what happened the last five years, how many people rented it out? How, it, people were discouraged from coming here. So just take that into account, please. The lady that spoke, I didn't know her, but her name's Brittany, she spoke about what is the distribution center that's coming in. I talked her outside, this is her first town council meeting, she came because of the fees. Apparently, she has it scheduled for November, and it's gone up from one-fifty to three hundred dollars. And she was concerned about that, hadn't heard anything about it before, and, um, 'cause all of a sudden now it'll go up to five hundred dollars. But I, what I'm hearing is she's already on the books, she's outside of the town limits. But if she's out, um, she's on the books for November, then is that what you're saying? I guess so, if it's gonna be tabled.
So what I did was, as I talked to everybody, so at a certain point, I knew this was coming in October, so I did put a halt for November, December, January, February, March. But I told them I was saving their, their day, their day was not gonna be taken up by another, another event. So I told most, uh, most of them I would have an answer for that by tomorrow. So that was the only, and I think that's a, that's not a not-for-profit, I believe.
No, it's not, she's said she was up. So I just think that, and then the garden club, to me, it seems very simple. They had a five-year, maybe do a five-year, I mean, discount for those that have more than one. I mean, you can do it differently, but I think, I don't have a problem, the J, I was in the J C's for twenty years. We rebuilt the fire pit at Stewart Park, paid five thousand dollars. And then the town would charge us a hundred and fifty dollars to use the grill, to doing barbecues, raising funds for the fireworks, and the Chris, it's just, I don't, I don't take any offense to that, that's part of the community, you have to raise funds.
So what's your point?
My point is, I don't have, I don't have a problem, I mean, being reasonable, just try to be reasonable, and I think that's what you were trying, I think that's what Eva's proposal was, being reasonable, except for the three hundred, but, no.
All right, so we'll just table this, and we'll get back to you maybe next, next month, okay?
Well, I still had one more question. Okay, forget all about the, this, okay, the user fees at the park, and I'm gonna work with the park director on this. But are they paid to you, or they, who are they paid to?
So the user fees, we're not talking about the rental of the pavilion.
I'm talking about the ball fields.
Ball fields.
At Lake June Park.
They come in and they pay in groups, don't they, Harry? They pay the front desk, so.
Okay, so they do, those, those user fees do come from the town, through the town?
Through the town, yes, for the ball fields.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know how that worked.
That money is tagged for capital for the park, for Lake, Lake June Park only, so.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know how that worked, honestly, and as long as I've been on here.
Capital? Yeah, so that twenty-dollar user fee per person down there is only for capital projects, it can't be used for any-
Okay, so is that per child, or, okay, so per child, that's what they pay, whether in town, out of town, or whatever?
Yeah, that, we didn't even touch that, it's an ordinance, we didn't even touch that, the user fee.
I, I kind of thought that, but I didn't know who collected it, so we do have an accounting for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Were we okay with this, as I come back, is the parks about upping that twenty-five dollars across the board? Where one was twenty-five, or do we wanna keep it the way it is for parks? For park, pavilions and for the rental of parks?
I think we should table the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yeah, I, still, I think we're almost done, I would have a workshop.
Direction on the, on the parks.
We gotta get a handle on our expenses, I think, so.
But, but also, is that enough for you to maintain the parks?
Y'all can submit recommendations on this. Okay, anything else on that? All right, we'll move on. Next is Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-nine. Mayor John Holbrook's appointment and Lake Placid Town Council's concurring resolution for the appointment of Charlotte Rodriguez as town administrator. And I will tell you, the past couple of weeks, she's been put under the gun, and she is, as far as I'm concerned, come through with flying colors, so, appreciate you being here, look forward to serving with you, and let's, let's have smooth sailing.
I call it trial by fire. I'll go ahead and make a motion, we adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-nine, appointment of Charlotte Rodriguez as town administrator. I'll go ahead and make a motion, we adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-nine, appointment of Charlotte Rodriguez as town administrator. God bless.
We got a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium?
I just have a question that, I was surprised that we didn't have, under the job responsibility, the scope of work. The thing that came to my mind, and I added a G, is approved town employee hiring and termination. Doesn't she, like, we've got a utilities director, so I know that there's staff that's underneath, you know, as we have open positions, is in, is in her responsibility. And then, on those decisions, not, it doesn't come to council, those are. So, I saw.
I can answer that.
I saw the supervi, vision, you know, direction, but it's like, okay, let's start with the hiring, and then if somebody doesn't work out, it's the termination.
So, we took the, this is the original, the resolution that's come forward, because the town has a strong mayor, the mayor is the C F, C A, C E, CFO, CEO.
CEO.
He has the ultimate decision, so what's happened in the past is that the town administrator would go to the mayor and discuss it, but the town administrator would be the one. Is that correct, Mayor? Because I know this has come up before.
I've always lifted up to the department heads.
Yes.
But, they've, they've always kept us informed.
As it should be, yeah, I just didn't think that, I know before we had a couple utility employee openings, remember Kevin was trying to fill them, fill them, and finally, he just filled them and he came and just informed us. Now, I didn't realize you had approved him hiring, I was just thinking that that's all part of the town administrator, a, as it should be, right? It's to make sure that the staffing's there, they're doing their job, and, you know, the, the termination, and then as you're having your weekly meetings, whatever you have with them, she would inform you. So, that was just, to me, it was like another responsibility that I thought was missing. And if it's something that the town administrator is responsible for, we should add it. If, if it isn't, then I guess it's fine as it is.
I think under our current structure, that, that falls under the mayor, the way our, the way our town is structured.
For, for staff?
Yeah, yeah.
I might come back with your.
No, 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 I don't think we should be involved at all, if all of a sudden, you know, a utility, um, the meter re, the person who goes out and reads the meters resign, and we have to replace them. Go do it, I don't think that it even needs to come to council, so.
You all could pass this resolution, we can look at the issue if we need to bring back a clarification on it, and adopt it in a subsequent meeting.
So, my second is still in, in both?
We have a motion and a second, any comments from the audience? Hold the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
And the last thing on the agenda is five C one, annual town holiday slash sanitary pickup schedule and town meetings.
So, it's me again.
These are all pretty.
Straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the only thing I bring to attention is, I, it's on there for the November eleventh, that Veterans Day, we're off. Town code tells us that if we, falls on a regular meeting on a Monday, we hold it the Tuesday after. So, the November meeting will be the twelfth on the Tuesday. Um, and then the other one, I'm seeking guidance on the commu, the CRA meetings, and, and.
I'm sorry, do you?
We talked about doing every other month, so you guys were in consensus to that, but now to move it away from the night of the town council meeting. Um, we had, uh, Charlotte, I think.
We, we talked about it because we had one last month.
Right.
So, if we had one last month, then we would have one in November, and then we would have one again, um, in.
January.
January, and then March, we would have our final report due. So, it would actually follow suit if we're able to set it up that way.
So, and then we're looking at the days of the week, I mean, when, when to hold it, do you want to still have it on the same night as council meeting?
I personally do, I, I mean, I, I like it at the same night, the first thing, and I think as we're getting more in sync, that, you know, it's not going to be hours of a meeting. So, I mean, I would rather see it the same every other month, same second Monday, right before the town council meeting, versus to try to do it the third Monday or the second Tuesday or something different. That's me personally. I, I agree, same, same night. Yeah, I, I prefer that as well, as a working person, I take Monday out of my work schedule, and so having it all the same day is helpful to me.
So, I will adjust this to be every other month, so the next one will be on that Tuesday, the twelfth of Nov, of November, so the next CRA. And I'll update this, this gets advertised in the Highlands New Sun, every year, in Highlands New Sun, and, uh, the Nextdoor app, the website, and it gets added to the public calendar that is also on our website.
Yep.
Didn't I see somewhere, didn't I see somewhere that in November, we're going to have the council meeting a week later because of a holiday?
The day after, the day.
The day after, okay.
The day after, so, yeah, so.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, November twelfth.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I would need a, a motion to approve the set schedule.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the, uh, holiday, meeting notices, it's holiday and sanitation schedule from October one, twenty-two-four to September thirty, twenty-two-five. I'll, I'll second it, we don't need to do the town meetings in with that?
Sorry?
You didn't include the town meetings, so I'm wondering, in your motion, should we include the town meetings, but modify to have the CRA be every other month?
Yes, you could do that, mo, modify it to add the CRA for.
I'll modify it to include the town meetings with the CRA to be there every other month. Thank you, second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other comments? Audience, bring her back, hold the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, any comments from the audience?
I have two questions, I, I don't know if it's too late to ask that.
Name and address, please.
Josephine Calmly, six oh seven Sunset Point Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I hope I'm not out of sync, but I have two questions. Do we have any idea how much revenue we did with the drag boat races, since that was very important to why we had this entertainment? Did we get any feedback on what was spent? Like Highlands County, for instance, we had the drag boat races a month ago, and the purpose of that was, we were hoping to bring, gen, generate revenue. Do we ever get some statistics?
I've not heard anything.
That comes, that would all come through the tourist development council, and, um, that comes from basically.
Or Deborah's on the T D C now.
Yeah, Deborah's on T D C, or, or Charles, maybe, is on T D C as well.
No, he's not on T D C.
They should, Josie, within, probably the next month, the, the venue itself has to prove so many room nights. They were providing in order to get the grant money that was authorized to them, providing that those payments, so they'll probably be within a dozen months. Deborah's on the T D C now, but in general, thanks, um, because I mean, for, it may be a little bit, but that would be.
Okay, I was, I've been in touch with the person, the event person that did that, and he's still applying for the grants. He said he's having some problems because if they paid ca, I don't quite understand this, but, you know, as it shakes out, we'll know, but, that, um, if he paid cash for some things, he's having problems getting reversed. So, I mean, there's all kinds of things that go on, and it happens over a little period of time before, and I don't know if they're coming back or not, I hope they will, I asked them to. And Kevin was nice enough to go down there and spend hours with the guy, I went and, went down there Saturday and Sunday, and, um, it was a great event. Nobody had any complaints, just y'all know, nobody that was down there, I went around and talked to people, they were totally happy. I, I didn't go in the bathrooms because there was kind of some people waiting, but I did ask, I said, I know this is kind of weird, but can you tell me, does it look good in there? And he said, yeah, it looks great, and he says, I'm happy, and I said, okay, the, you know, I just, you know, I did try to go down there, but we will know, um, in the next.
That's great.
Yeah, and, and I want that, they know we want them to come back.
Okay, now, I just have one other question, because it, I know everyone wants to eagerly get to bed tonight. I had many questions asked, many people asked me questions, when the power went out and we didn't have internet. Now, we were all fortunate because we, you know, we have our phones. The question was, were we to boil water because we lost electricity? And a lot of people didn't know, they would come to me and ask me, and I would say, when in doubt, boil water. So, part of that question is going to be, do we have like a generator backup when the electricity is down?
We had no problem with water, the only time you have a boil water notice is if a line breaks.
And, and that's what I?
And if, if there was a line or something that was, was broken, yeah, somehow we would have got the word out to people.
Because that was my question.
Like there was in some of the counties, I can't remember what they were, but we, we just never had a problem with that. Our water was, our water was fine.
Good, because, you know, I just really didn't know, and I didn't want to give false information, you know.
But we do have generator backup.
When just the electricity goes down, we're good in our town, is what you're saying.
Yeah, we, we have generator backup on the water and, and also on our lift stations.
Oh, good.
So, we, we were able to, to take care of all of our, our customers.
Okay.
And, and Josie, as far as getting the word out, as far as getting the word out, there's the automated phone, uh, call, it's the reverse nine-one, reverse nine-one-one, where you would get a phone call, re, recording to say there's a, am I correct? That there's a recording that says boil water notice, till further notice.
We, we definitely get it out to everybody.
Well, that's good, because I can share that with people, because they were asking me, and I'm like, you didn't, yeah, I only remember when we had an interruption in the sewer, that was different, when we were doing.
Yeah, we don't have our utility director here, but we do have.
Well, I thank you very much.
We have chapter two.
Leanne Bemus, compliance coordinator for the town of Lake Placid. Um, we do have Everbridge, which is the reverse nine-one-one program, um, so whenever we have a boil water, that does come out in, almost immediately, as fast as we can.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Uh, go to my department heads, anybody have anything? Okay, we'll bring her back to council, you want to start?
No, aren't we doing this, or?
What is that?
It was called the walk-on agenda for ARPAK.
No, walk-on agenda, we almost offered.
Was that, Eva had one, just because the ARPAK membership is Kevin as the administrator, and, and we should, uh, replace him with Charlotte, and then.
Oh, yeah, to replace, yes, I forgot, we did add that to us. Yeah, this is, uh, it's a, it's a walk-on agenda item, Highlands County Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee appointment, and ARPAK appointment recommendations. Statement of issue, council consideration, recommendation to the Highland County Board of County Commissioners to appoint Charlotte Gannus Rodriguez, replacing Kevin McCarthy to the Recreation and Park Advisory Committee. And to also recommend appointment of Dana Riddell as the alternate member to replace Eva Cooper Hateman as the alternate member of ARPAK.
But we did Dana last month, right, we did Dana and Carolyn Morrison last month.
I'm going to ask you to do it again, because I'm not sure if we did, because I don't think.
Whether we sent the letter, and this way, we can send the letter that these are our three, our three, um, folks. Would be then, the main would be, uh, Charlotte, Carolyn, with Dana as the backup. Okay, so I will make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Go ahead, Colin, you've got the record.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the walk-on, any comments? Audience, seeing none, hold the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? No?
I, I just, I have, you know, I always have something.
What, of course.
Um, it appears to me that we're going to have a distribution center before we have a police station. So, I'm not a happy camper, and I'm hoping that our new town administrator can follow up on that, because, um, the conversations and just casual conversation that I have with Mr. Cool, because he plays at my facility every week. He says, we are ready to go, we can go to bid even before we go to this, uh, ridiculous, uh, zoning thing that we have to go through, which is not even on the zoning for this month, it has been pushed back another month because we had so much work for the distribution center. So, I would ask that our town administrator stay on that, please, we need to get this building started, we need to get a fork in the ground, or no one is going to afford to build this building, and we need it. Now, this distribution center is supposed to be done by December of twenty-twenty-five, do you think the police department could beat them? In the race to get a building built?
That would be nice, um, we had a meeting today, and Dennis is already in the process of scheduling us for, I believe, sometime this week.
For?
For us to meet with them.
For, to go for?
For, to go forward.
To go forward with?
Yes.
With what, with, with, uh, with bids to build this thing, we have, do we have the proper, uh, architectural drawings and everything for which we can go to bid?
That's what he's looking at, with the placement, because, go ahead, Chief.
We're still waiting to see if we have architectural diagrams from Cool and Cobb, we've received nothing from them.
That's what I, that's what I want to make sure you know, and I would like to, for you to follow up on that if it's okay with the mayor, because if we don't keep the foot on the accelerator, we're never going to get that building built. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is that it?
I'm done.
That's all?
That's all.
Oh, my goodness.
That's all.
Deborah?
Look, it's eight fifty-seven.
Deborah?
Yeah, um, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I would like to have, um, our town administrator and our Parks and Recreation Director, um, schedule a workshop for just the Lake June Park. I think we need a workshop on all the parks, but really, we have, seems like we have a lot of critical things down there, um, going on, we, we still never established the parking. Um, where the pavement's going to go and all of that, we still have some questions about pickleball, we also now have questions about the condition of the ball fields. So, I think we need to have it, and it was suggested to me that we do it on a Saturday, so that folks can come. Um, I don't know if that agrees with you guys, but I hope you'll agree with me to have a roll-up-your-sleeves workshop just on Lake June Park, and really get it down, and do a master plan, or do some kind of plan that we can all agree on, and hopefully, everybody will come with an open mind, and we can get this thing done. That's what I'm hoping for, so I hope you guys would go with me, and don't we, I don't think we need to vote, because we've done this before, where we could just agree to have our town administrator and Parks and Recreation get together to plan a meeting, um, sometime soon.
Harry, do they, um, they play in the morning, on Saturday morning, do they play, use the field on Saturday morning? So, could we have it Saturday afternoon?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever time you all think is a good time.
Afternoon works for me, because I go back, I'm sorry, I'm still working, and Saturday morning is tough for me, but I can do Saturday afternoon.
I'll make it work.
Okay, everybody agree with that, so?
You okay with that?
Miss New Town Administrator?
You okay with Saturday afternoon? Oh, I, I can do Saturday afternoon, I was just excited to see on the agenda the regional plans for a master plan that got pulled off, so, yeah, they've got a conversation.
Well, it, it's up to, whatever staff can figure out is, is in work with us, I mean, I'm good, anytime, I can do my schedule around it.
Once I get past this week, this, this coming week, then I'm good, this coming week is wicked, but I'm out of town this whole next week.
Well, let her just get in touch with us and let us know, if that's okay with you guys, she worked with us.
Look at some dates, yeah, see what dates look good.
And then we don't have another herd.
Yeah, so I'm good with. Please, don't even go there, oh, no, please. I'm good with that, my only caution is, it knows to go beyond Lake June Park. I was pretty excited to see master plan on, you know, for our parks on the agenda, uh, but because of, I think, an emergency, it had to get pulled off. Um, so I think it goes beyond just Lake June Park, we have a lot of different parks, and a lot of different interests and needs, that I would hate to just concentrate on one, and then we can get professionals come in to do the right workshops. I did have a conversation with Spring Lakes, Don Elwell had given me their master plan, and so I met with them. Um, it's pretty exciting how they do it, how they go out and they do all the different meetings with all the ball clubs and, you know, the different groups, and then they do, um, town workshops, like what you're saying, uh, where people give input, and then they have a website where they do, you know, red and green, and you vote on what you want, and they, so it's a process that they go through. And, um, you know, I'm talking to Charlotte, the Central Florida Regional Planner was going to come, and, you know, another great idea. So, I, I would caution us that if we're going to just focus on one park, because there's a lot of recreational needs people want, that we're not going to cram them all into one, it's going to be the overall park plan.
I don't want you to misunderstand me, but I think if we can just get Lake June Park, we've got some grants hanging around, we got parking, we need to go ahead and finish that grant. Just, it's, it's a big nut to crack with all the different people that are involved down there, Miracle Field, the ball people, everybody down there. I mean, there's all kinds of different people, and I just don't know how many hours you want to, I mean, and get the biggest thing done, and then look at the demographics and look at all the parks, because the other ones, like, um, Ms. Ventress was saying, we've got a whole new park down there on Dow Hall, and that's a whole nother thing. So, I would just, I mean, if we could just start with Lake June Park and get that done and get it out of the way, and then look at all the parks together, I agree. I mean, I'm just saying, we have some immediate needs, and we need to, to try to, to do that, to move that along, and then look at all our parks. We got a lot of parks, you know, stuck around different places.
We can integrate all the others.
Yeah.
Start with this one.
Yeah, if we start with, if we, if we start with Lake June Park, because it is multifaceted and, and the biggest place, and we still have this pickleball issue hanging right up there with the police department, so, we're going to get involved in, to, you know, 2035 or something.
For the record, Charlie, I just wanted you to realize that the warehouse that we were talking about, the 120,000 square feet, could accommodate 100 indoor pickleball courts if it didn't work out.
Can we put the police department there too?
Just saying. Square footage-wise, you could make that work, but, uh, no, I appreciate everyone's consideration. I think it is, um, the last meeting was so long, everyone was tired, there was a lot of things going on, it was a very busy meeting. I, for one, did not notice that the courts were oriented differently and proportioned differently until after the fact, which didn't help anything. I think it's wise to have, uh, and I, and I agree, I think, I think you need to have a town-wide master plan renewed, but at this time, and I know you think I'm partial, which I am, with the pickleball project, but this has been going on long, and I, I've spoken to each of you about, you know, a proposed alternative that I think solves a lot of the issues that everyone may have in preserving green space, it's kind of a wasted spot, and it keeps it away from the other side of the park, like we heard, to, but this way gets everyone together, and we can kind of work it all out and hash things out together. But, I appreciate everyone's willingness to work on it, and I do want to commend, uh, the town staff this weekend. Everywhere I went, everyone had a smile on their face, just with broom, shovels down Interlake and Main Street. I didn't even realize they were running the garbage, I, I just got home and I saw the truck go by, and I ran in there, and I ran down before they turned around, and they were gracious, stopped, dumped it, but everyone was, I didn't see one employee that was foul or upset, they were just happy to go, and they were busting it. And I, Alan, who, who did the park around Devane yesterday? Was, was that city employees, or was that some private people?
Yeah, what?
He did half that park in half a day, and that, and he needs to be commended to take that on by himself.
Yeah, that was it, it was a great job, I walked there in the morning.
It really did a nice job on it, so.
Yeah.
But, thank you all, have a good evening.
Joy?
Yeah, I do, I'd like to have, um, one thing, one thing put on the agenda for next month, um, an open discussion about, um, a residential fertilizer ordinance. Now, when we went through this whole sewer thing, remember that report that was put out by Swift Mud in 2020, and they listed all the things, the remediation things we could do? And it was the fertilizer ordinance, there were, um, wetlands, um, septic tank inspections, and then sewer to septic conversions. It's going to be some time before we can get all of our septics taken care of. So, in the meantime, I'd like to have, like, an open discussion with, with the citizens and the council, of course, and get a feel for what they would think about a residential fertilizer ordinance. Now, Ann Kennedy has done a lot of research on this, background research, and she would like to do a presentation at the next meeting.
I think it's a great idea, and what we should do is, once we get ours done, we should recommend it to the county and go up there and storm the county and get them to do it. We need to protect our legs.
Interesting, she found out that all the counties around us have ordinances. And I guess there was a moratorium on that at some time, because the lobbyists for the fertilizer companies, you know, stopped it, but that moratorium has been lifted because they realized they didn't have enough data, and, and now it's back on the table. So, anyway, just an open discussion and see where it goes.
Okay.
And also, my ulterior motive for saying this tonight is, then we can get something into the newspaper ahead of time, so that the pop, the people know this is going to be on the agenda, and they can get their two cents in.
So, that some of the, some of the fertilizer people would know to come as well, you know, the people that...
Well, they, yes, open discussion, it's got to be open.
I mean, yeah, they got to know, right? You know?
Yeah.
I want my guy that does my lawn, I want him here, you know?
Apparently, she has talked to the fertilizer people, and, um, but she knows the details on that. She's, I think she's done a lot of work.
Would, would you have her present, or?
She, yeah, Ann Kennedy would be the presenter. So, with that, it's okay with you to have that on the agenda?
Sure. She's already written it down, so. It's already started.
Could the public get the presentation ahead of time?
Oh, we could put it in the packet?
Be in the packet.
Okay. I'm sure I don't forget that.
All right, we'll bring her back to our town attorney.
Nothing further, sir.
What?
Did Bert, did he teach you that?
Tell Bert, tell Bert we finished 2:30.
We appreciate you being here in Bert's absence.
Yes, sir, glad to serve.
Hope we, uh, see more of you.
I'll look forward to it.
Okay. Charlotte, it's your turn.
It's my turn? It's, it's been eventful. No, it's an honor to be here. The staff are, are phenomenal. I couldn't ask for a better staff, and I can't do anything without them, so, they, um, really showed me what they were all about in this first, we're calling it baptized by fire, two weeks, and we're into the third week, so it's a joy to be here.